Check one, two, test, test, test. But Dave is hearing this in the control room. Check one, two, test, 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 one, two. Checking one, two, three. Are you hearing that? Check, 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 one, two, test, one, two. Can you hear that? Okay. Let me, let me check with Mark real quick. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. It's Thursday, December 9th, 2021. The time is now 6:30, 6:00 PM. We apologize for the delay. We're finishing an executive session upstairs that had a few technical difficulties. So, members of the public who attend the meeting physically will be asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks will be required for all attendees per City of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. I'd like to invite anyone who's able and willing to stand to join me for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And I want to take a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Next up is item number three, meeting minutes. Today I'm going to be assisted by Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, motion to approve. I don't have my screen up.
Well, luckily, there's no, there's nothing for 3A, so you're good. So you can skip right to 3B, so.
Okay. Okay, everyone hear me? Okay, so I move to accept items 3B, 1 through 12.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Adams to accept items 3B, 1 through 12. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember QB. Please vote. Okay, I'll take a, I'll take a voice vote for you, Councilmember QB.
Yeah, I'm on John's.
I can just do a voice vote. I, okay. Is Councilmember Navarro here? No? All right. So that vote, that vote passes five to zero with Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Navarro absent. All right. Next up here, we have item number four, reports and announcements, mayor's reports and announcements. I'm going to come on down here to the front. See, do I need to be in a microphone or?
That would be great. If you can just kind of stand it up.
Okay, sounds good. See, I'm used to the old school days when there was a podium right here for all of you who've been here for quite some time. So that threw me off a little bit, so. All right, so here we go. We have the Arizona Parks and Recreation Association 2021 Best of the Best Outstanding Program Award. I'm going to call down Jamie Sullivan, the Recreation Superintendent for the City of Apache Junction and Chair of the Arizona Parks and Recreation Association Awards Committee, and also staff from our Community Services Division. I'd like for them to come join me down here. So the COVID-19 pandemic has impacted all of us in ways we could have never imagined. Over the months, we've been separated from our friends and our families. Classes, programs, and activities were halted to keep people safe and healthy. But for many older adults, isolation quickly became a new and separate health issue. In fact, according to an AARP study, more than 35% of adults ages 50 and older felt reported feeling sadder than normal. Tempe's Parks and Recreation Team knew something had to be done to help. And when adult program participants couldn't come to city facilities during quarantine, the team brought the programs to them at home, and they did it better than every other city in the entire state of Arizona. From Zoom classes to food distributions to technology trainings, the team went above and beyond to help impact the lives of Tempe's older adults. The extraordinary work they did helped people to reconnect during the pandemic, and it also helped to improve lives. I'm so proud to announce that the City of Tempe's Parks and Recreation Team has been given the Arizona Parks and Recreation Association's Best of the Best Outstanding Program Award for its Active Adult 50-plus Program. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jamie Sullivan, Recreation Superintendent for the City of Apache Junction and Chair of the Arizona Parks and Recreation Association Awards Committee, and she's going to tell you more about this award.
Thank you, Mary Woods, City, Tempe council members. The Arizona Parks and Recreation Association annually has a committee that reviews over 30 different programs, sometimes anywhere from 100 to 200 submittals, to recognize the state's best of the best in programming, in recreation, and facilities in the profession of Parks and Recreation. Tonight, I am honored to present the mayor, the council, and the hard-working staff of Tempe for being the recipient of the Best of the Best in Active Adult Programming. You guys did a fantastic job during a very challenging time, and I am so excited. I've worked with some of you for many years to be able to present this award to you guys.
Can the council please come down here and join me for a photo? See if we can all find a way to squeeze in, there's a lot of us up here. All right, my last announcement is just to announce that the City of Tempe Board and Commission reappointments and new appointments. There are 26 reappointments and 23 new appointments to the city's boards and commissions as outlined in item 6A1 on the agenda. And once again, I think that's really important to note, there are pretty much an even distribution of people who wanted to continue to serve on our boards and commissions and serve our community in a volunteer way, but also 23 new people, meaning we're getting a great infusion of new talent and residents who are getting actively involved in our boards and commissions. So I wanted to thank both groups, and our boards and commissions are very, very strong organizations. I would definitely encourage everyone to take a look at the city clerk's website and look for vacancies, and please apply. We would love to have more names on file, but thank you to the people who have chosen to serve. All right, next up here, we have item 4B, City Manager's Reports and Announcements. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have some items tonight. We wanted to present a couple of slides on a COVID update first. Just one sec. There we go. This slide really highlights the success that we've had since we've really committed to making sure that our highest priority as a city in addressing and alleviating COVID-19 in our community is to stress the importance of getting vaccinated. And not just say get vaccinated, but also actually provide, you know, a number of events around our city to get people actually vaccinated and boosted. As you can see from this slide, since August 17th, we've had 2,797 people receiving vaccines or booster shots at our events. We've had 34 different vaccination opportunities since August 22nd. We have four more this month, including the Fantasy Lights Boat Parade this Saturday, little side plug there, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM down at Tempe Town Lake. And that kind of highlights one of our strategies, which is we, we believe it's, it's important to, to kind of pair our message about vaccinations and boosters with special events so we can get the most people. And we had tremendous success this past weekend during the Festival of the Arts here in downtown Tempe. Jason, if you could jump back to that, that's the last slide just a quick. And it, as you can see, we, we gave 400 shots on December 5th alone. And, and 827 in the, in total, three-day arts festival. That's proof positive that our efforts are working and that we need to continue to do these things to get people vaccinated. I, I know that you're all aware that now the vaccination eligibility stretches all the way from age five through adulthood, so we have entirely new populations that we can spread the word to. And one other thing I think I'll, I'll mention real quick is that we, you know, we, we are only a fraction of the population of the entire state, but we have, you know, a significant percentage way above our proportionate population of vaccination activity. On any given day during this entire period of time since August, we are leading the way in terms of trying to get people vaccinated, above and beyond our population would dictate normally. So that's a significant point that we should point, that we should note. Go ahead, Jason, next slide. This is another exciting announcement. In the fight against COVID-19, we are going to be a site for free COVID-19 home rapid test distribution. We are hoping that beginning on Tuesday, December 22nd, that we're going to start distributing free COVID-19 rapid test kits at several locations, including Tempe Public Library, the Cahill Senior Center, the North Tempe Multi-Generational Center, and Tempe Community Action Agency, our great human services partner. So we, we urge you to, to take advantage of this, and it's something else that we're really excited about. And next item, it's an exciting announcement about one of our employees here at the City of Tempe who received a very prestigious honor. The Arizona Capital Times recognized Alex Chin, up to very recently, one of our council aides, and recently accepted a position in financial services, working with our interim deputy city manager, Tom Dunzing. He is now one of the 40 under 40, according to the Capital Times of Arizona. We have a brief video that describes it.
Hi, I'm Gary Gerato, editor of the Arizona Capital Times. Good evening and welcome to the 2021 Arizona Capital Times Breakdown Breakouts, Capital Under 40. I want to congratulate this year's honorees and say that as we've returned to the workplace in the face of a global pandemic, your work ensured critical services continued and policies reflected both Arizona's short-term and long-term interests. You have improved the educational landscape by pushing for equal access and modernizing our school funding system. You have worked on Arizona's most monumental legislative issues. You have fought for the most vulnerable populations. You have represented organizations and companies that have made Arizona what it is today. You have taken on the most challenging issues and in the process, established your credentials through hard work and persistence. We ask the honorees tonight to whom they attribute their success, as well as what advice would they give their younger selves? I think you'll enjoy the responses you see tonight. Now, onto the show.
Alex Chin started as a volunteer for the City of Tempe in 2001. He achieved over 900 hours of volunteer time and was awarded the Youth Volunteer of the Year Award in 2006. He has since worked in various departments, including community services, public works, police, financial services, and is now in the mayor and council office as a city council aide. Alex graduated from Arizona State University and is currently pursuing his master's degree in public administration. His career in municipal government reflects his values and drive for making tangible and lasting impacts on the community.
Well, I want to thank my parents, actually, for their courage, support, and generosity. That's what actually got to where I am today. My parents made the brave decision to move to the United States to provide me and my older sister better opportunities. They were faced with being in a foreign country and spoke very little English, yet they continue to provide the best life possible for me and my sister. They demonstrated hard work, kindness, and that is exactly why I pursued a career in local municipality. I have a passion for helping those in the community, and working with the city allows me to do that, in a sense, help my parents. So I'm genuinely grateful for my parents and their continuing support and encouragement. If I could go back in time and tell my 21-year-old self, I would tell him to keep doing what he's doing. Be happy, be kind, you will make many friends along the way, and you will do great things. Continue to learn, help those in need, and keep an open mind to all possibilities that are out there in the world.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes, it is my first time using a microphone. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to congratulate Alex on this award. It's certainly very, very well-deserved, as most of the people in this room know, because it's a lot of city staff. You know, Alex was my council aide for a year and a half, almost two years, and he did an outstanding job in every regard. I had to tell him not to text me before 8:00 in the morning. I had to kept, kept telling him not to call me, sir. And, you know, he just went above and beyond every opportunity he got. He's on vacation right now, and he was still texting me all day, making sure I'm prepared for this meeting and my, my tablet's charged and all. Like, eventually, I'm like, Alex, aren't you on vacations? Well, technically, yes. I'm like, well, then, then let me worry about the charge on my computer. You know, I got this, I appreciate, you know, your commitment and all, but, you know, enjoy your vacation. And on the way down here in the elevator, I felt a little guilty because I didn't explicitly tell him not to come to this meeting. So I was a little bit worried that he would be here. I don't see him here, so I hope that, I probably suspect he's watching at home, but, you know, Alex did an absolutely fantastic job in his role. He's one of those people that lit up the room and everyone respected and, and everyone kind of got along with, always so happy and jovial. And while I'm sad that, that he's no longer my council aide, I'm very happy for his, his new opportunity in the financial services office, and this award couldn't be more well-deserved by Mr. Chin. So congratulations to you, Alex, if you're watching at home, and I will be mad at you if you're watching at home, so don't acknowledge that you saw this if you are, but congratulations, my friend.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Keating, Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I, I share Mr. Keating's sentiments about Alex. He's been a great employee. I originally hired him at the city many, many years ago, and he's been a pleasure to work with, and I wish him the best, and he really deserved this award, and so I'm very proud of him, and I wish him the best with his new life and promotion to financial services. And he's really good with numbers, so it'll be a great fit for him. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams? All right, now, congra-, you know, Alex, on behalf of all of us, congratulations. It's been a pleasure to get to know you. I mean, I've been back at City Hall now for about 18 months and just, you know, having an opportunity to see you on the third floor and your shining, happy face and, and willingness to always help, not just, you know, the council members who- happy face and willingness to always help, not just, you know, the council members who you're assigned to, but frankly, all of the council members and any of the staff on the third floor throughout the organization who needed assistance with pretty much anything and everything. So it's kind of Vice Mayor Keating said, I mean, I'm definitely, you know, sorry that I'm not going to see you on the third floor every day, but excited for your new opportunity in financial services. I know you came over here from financial services in the first place, and you were one of the fastest rising stars in the organization. And I'm confident that you're going to continue to be one of those back in financial services. So we just appreciate all the work that you've done on the third floor, assisting the council staff and council members with everything. But we really do wish you the most of this opportunity, and congratulations on your 40 under 40. It is very, very well deserved. Right, next up, we have-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple others.
Oh, you do? You got more? All right.
I want to keep the good vibes-
Keep it going!
I want to keep the good vibes going, Mr. Mayor. And we have a couple, just real brief announcements. After an extensive national recruitment, I'm very pleased to welcome Jessica Jupiterz, our new deputy community services director of library services to the city of Tempe. Go ahead and say it. Jessica has more than six years of experience as a deputy director. In her previous role, she served as deputy director of public services for the eight-branch Solano County Library System in Solano County, California. Prior to that, Jessica spent eight years working in numerous supervisor and manager roles in the Sacramento Public Library System. She also served as a librarian with the Las Vegas Clark County Library. She's originally from Phoenix, so she knows the area. But she brings with her a passion for equity, diversity, and inclusive management, a yes model of customer service, as well as a background of facilitating webinars for professional library organizations like the American Library Association, the Public Library Association, the Arizona Library Association, programming for young adults, and LGBTQ+ services. Jessica presently serves as a member of the ALA Council. She is an ALA mentor. She is the Rainbow RT Director at Large and previously served as a board member for the Lavender Library in Sacramento. So, very impressive credentials. We're very excited to have her aboard. And last, over the last month or so, we've been working through a departure of somebody who I have the utmost respect for and who I know council feels exactly the same way. Our longtime deputy city manager and chief financial officer, Ken Jones, retired in the month of November. Ken served for 27 years with the city of Tempe. He served seven and a half years on the third floor as the deputy city manager and CFO. Ken is the epitome of integrity. Ken is someone who I was honored to work alongside with here at the city. The successes that we have seen over the course of the last years, and especially in the tenure since I've been promoted as city manager, there is nothing that we have done that in some way, shape, or form wasn't touched either a little bit or very significantly by Ken Jones. And he is a proud father and grandfather, and I know that he is very excited to spend time with his wife and his family in retirement and do all the things that I know he loves, which is his true passion. But we will miss him. Secondly, on that note, we are very, very fortunate that our own financial services director, Tom Dunzing, who was here, has agreed to step up into the interim deputy city manager role and to serve in that capacity for the foreseeable future. Tom is here. He is a longtime city employee, also served in increasingly responsible capacities for the city of Maricopa and the city of Glendale, where he was in fact a deputy city manager. Tom is outstanding in what he does. I am very excited to have him aboard. If you're going to have to kind of contend with losing someone of the caliber of Ken Jones in retirement, it is very, very meaningful and great to have the option of being able to call upon someone of the great caliber of Tom Dunzing to step into that role. And we are very pleased to have him aboard in that capacity. So thank you, Tom. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Really appreciate it. All right, next up, we have item number five, public appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals the opportunity to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council. Public appearances shall be limited to an aggregate total of 60 minutes. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. And speakers will be taken on a first-come, first-served order in the order that the cards were received. Also, I should say, speakers not choosing to appear in person or virtually may have their comments read into the record time permitting. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on commenting or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. With that said, I've got a couple of cards here with me, and I'm going to call them up, and I'll also look to our city clerk to see if there's more. But the first one I have here is for item 7B2, which is First and Farmer, and that's Merrill Darcy. Thank you, Mr. Darcy. Please state your name, place of residence, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Okay, thank you. My name is Merrill Darcy, resident of Tempe, and I have a concern with the First and Farmer. And we approved it, and I was really excited about the new project because about in 2019, it was actually, it was brought to us as a commercial office, industrial type of endeavor at four stories, which was nice. I figured it could have been a creative cluster, maybe with more jobs, some business opportunities, local services, things that were needed in the neighborhood. And then I spoke with the developer, and then, and behold, now, it didn't just pencil out, and they want to change it. So now they're asking this project, they're asking, which you're not voting on tonight, that'll be in the future. This is just the first hearing of this item. But now they're asking the city council and also the support of the neighborhood in a general plan amendment, which will increase the density, which wasn't even heard of, and now it is, it's important now. And then not only do they need a general plan amendment, but they also need a rezoning from general industrial also to, and then change it over to residential, which would be mixed use. Then they want a preliminary area development, PAD, and it just keeps going on and on. Then they want reduced setbacks, they want to increase the height, they want to reduce the parking minimums on here. And then the next thing you know is that we're going to waive all the development fees. And on top of that, they want a subsidy for 20 affordable housing units on top of this. They want to put in 200 units. I said, this is like, this is incredible. We don't need anything like this in this neighborhood. This is not, it's without a context. I've written letters, and then I also have the support of the neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darcy. Really appreciate it. Next up, we have Janet Darcy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My husband took most of my thunder when I was going to talk about, but I will reiterate, when this project was first proposed to us, we thought it was very edgy. It looked good on paper, and we thought that it would be an asset to the neighborhood, even though the height would tower over our neighborhood. And I said, okay, but it would bring some needed jobs, and there wouldn't, there would be minimal impact on our neighborhood from the traffic. Now, they want to add 200 units. Yeah, some of them would be affordable housing, so they say, if you give them the G-Lib. That's a lot of people, and it's a lot of height. And it is taller than some of the buildings in our downtown. And this is a block and a half away from my little, single-family residence home. And I wonder, where is that going to end up stopping? Is it going to stop there on that west side of Farmer? Is that it? Or is it going to creep onto Wilson, which is three houses away from where I live? Or is it going to continue until Roosevelt? Or all the way to Priest? Are you actually going to end up forcing me out of my neighborhood? Because my neighborhood has been destroyed by a lot of development in the area. This development does not fit. It is not a good fit for my neighborhood. You know, I don't mind the developer making a profit. I understand that. That's what they're in business for. But please, not at the expense of my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darcy. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, any other comment cards that you have?
Mayor, I do have a few comment cards here. An additional one related to this same item, from Philip Yates, item 7B2. Mr. Yates is unable to attend tonight's city council hearing on the First and Farmer project. Below is a summary of his comments provided to city staff. First, the First and Farmer site should be kept that way, the way it is today, with general industrial zoning with a PAD overlay. Any type of MU4 approved in Riverside would increase taxation of homeowners in Riverside. Phil has never seen anything like this, referring to the draft agreement proposed by the developer to the neighborhood. Phil would never sign an agreement like this, and he never agreed to making changes to this agreement. Some other conditions in the agreement include up to $100,000 for speed humps, which would be great, but Phil felt he should not be imposed to this type of binding agreement. Other concerned benefits include providing 20 low-income housing units out of the 200 units proposed. What other tax credits would they receive for this project? Phil Yates asked the developer at the DRC meeting what these units are going to look like. He did not receive a response from the developer. Phil is concerned that the floor plans do not show what the design of the units are. The developer agreement said they would provide parking permits and where workers would be parking, and for subcontractors not to use Wilson Street or Roosevelt Street. This would be great, but if you don't sign it, are they now going to cut through the neighborhood? And are these options now thrown out the door? The agreement is now null and void. Phil states it is almost necessary that council should consider these issues when making a decision. This type of agreement to the neighborhood should not be put on the shoulders of the president/chair of the neighborhood, but rather considered as conditions by city council. Ultimately, Phil Yates hopes that the project does not pass as a representative from the Riverside neighborhood. Note, Phil had a neighborhood meeting last night, December 8th, and he stated that 100% of the residents that were in attendance were opposed to the project. Mr. Yates also provided a letter to you that's been distributed to council. Next item comes from Steve Tyrell. Weaver Drive in Tempe. Steve writes, "Section 13 of the Papco North Tempe Draft Plan, the CAP recommends that, quote, 'Tempe reduces its reliance on nonrenewable energy sources by using more clean energies such as nuclear, solar, and wind,' unquote. Since nuclear energy is neither safe nor clean, I suggest that the words 'nuclear energy' be removed from the document. A better approach is to make use of solar and wind energy sources, which are safe and clean, which is all that the document should reference." Next item comes from Gretchen Reinhardt for general comment. Gretchen writes, "I have lived in Tempe's Escalante neighborhood since 1995, serving on a wide range of neighborhood community committees, as well as interfaith community organizations. I currently serve on Tempe's Sustainability Commission. I volunteer because I believe it is critical to Tempe's future health, vibrance, and economic viability, that we ramp up our climate action and resilience activities. We must not only lead for Tempe, we must serve as a catalyst to the cities all around Arizona to take effective action. Tempe's success requires us to prioritize funding for the climate action plans recommendations. Please make climate action a funding priority in 2022 and beyond." Last comment card comes from Ron Tav Scott, and it's referenced a later agenda item as well, 7C2. Ron writes, "Dear Mayor and Council, the applicant Hugh Mantle's affiliates is requesting a zoning change for the proposed three-story mixed-use development, Apache Rock Apartments, located at 1935 East Apache Boulevard. Troubling is the claim that the project will be workforce, but with no guarantees nor deed restrictions to assure this promise and claim. Once again, a developer requests exceptions to current zoning to increase the value of their project. And once again, a developer is claiming falsely that market-rate pricing structure will somehow end up affordable. This narrative has a long and tired history. In fact, this particular developer has such a history. When Camden II was voted on by council, the developer included minimal public amenities and a paltry $40,000 to the Housing Trust affiliate fund. Likewise, when the Maker District project was proposed, the claim was that the units would be affordable/workforce. They are not. Tempe residents are currently in the midst of an affordable housing crisis. Many are being driven out as a result of rapidly escalating rents. We are becoming a tale of two cities, one for the wealthy and the other, the working and poor, who are forced out to living surrounding communities. The request for exceptions to zoning is the council's opportunity to explore more responsible development for the working and poor residents of Tempe. We are all fully aware, this is not only a local municipal issue, it is national in scope. But the housing slash pricing burdens placed on our city and residents can be addressed and mitigated by using our existing public policy/ordinance opportunities. If not now, when? Respectfully, Ron Tav Scott, Tempe resident." Mayor, that concludes all the public comment that I've received to this point.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Really appreciate it. Next up, we're going to move to item number six, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card located next to the city clerk and submit your completed card back to the clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion, and I will call your name when it is time for public comment. The consent agenda this evening are miscellaneous items 6A1 through 6A13, with the exception of item 6A14, which was withdrawn at the request of the applicant, awards of bids and contracts, items 6B1 through 6B9, and resolutions, items 6C1 through 6C6. Any agenda item marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item and can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Keating?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item 6A2.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Anyone else? Members of the public? All right, seeing none from the public, let me go back to the council. Any other items you'd like removed for separate consideration? All right, well, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6A2?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Keating and seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Please vote. Trying to get over here. There we go. Okay. And that motion passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Devaro absent. Next up, we have item 6A2, which is to approve six regular full-time benefited positions, one regular part-time position, and a transfer from the general fund contingency budget to the Human Services Department and the city manager's office to provide sufficient budget appropriation to fund the early implementation of the fiscal year 2022/23 homeless solution supplemental resource request during the current fiscal year, which is 2021/2022. This item was pulled by Vice Mayor Keating. Vice Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mayor. This is, as you pointed out, you know, we're transferring funds to, for our six new full-time human services employees, and that includes our full-time Tempe Works coordinator. And since I have never pulled a consent agenda item in my five and a half years, I felt now is as good a time as any to pull it and to speak about how happy I am about these positions, in particular, the Tempe Works coordinator. So with that, Mayor, I move to approve item 6A2.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Keating and seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Any other comments on this item? Yes, Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I concur with Mr. Keating, Vice Mayor Keating, apologize, on this. And I'm really happy that we're doing everything possible to support our homeless outreach efforts. So, great job.
Thank you, Council- Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember QB?
No.
Oh, I saw your microphone. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Just a really quick comment on my end as well. I just wanted to thank the interdepartmental team here at the City of Tempe that really has been working diligently towards solutions to this challenge. We know we are investing in solutions that have a real track record of permanently housing individuals and families, many of whom have been chronically homeless, which is well over 10 years. The MAG Regional Council, I happen to be part, and MAG is Maricopa Association of Governments, happened to be in a meeting yesterday regarding this, and the Pathways to Home Plan was approved. It was the first effort ever in the history of the valley where all cities came together unanimously and agreed to put $133 million into this effort over the next 10 years. It's a huge step forward, because one of the things that people many times ask us at the City of Tempe is, it seems the city government here, between council and staff, does a whole lot in this effort, but do we really have a lot of support from the region when it comes to actually addressing this from a regional perspective? And I'm glad to say that as of yesterday, we have full commitment that we're going to be devoting $133 million to this effort as a region. But to also go off of Vice Mayor Keating's comments, I really appreciate this. This is a really great opportunity to kind of do something. We normally don't do budget things until the, maybe April, May of the next year, but the reality is, and I think Councilmember Garland talked about this during one of our previous meetings, she said, "Look, the people who are currently on the streets and suffering, and many of which were coming to the cold weather months and obviously in the warm weather months, which we know can be brutal and deadly, these people don't care about our fiscal year. They need support now, they need resources now." And frankly, I really appreciate this council for stepping up and providing the funding and the resources and the positions necessary to really help, frankly, the most vulnerable people in our community become permanently housed and get back on the track to success in living a full, complete life. So I just wanted to say thank you to our staff and thank you to the council for all of your efforts and for really, frankly, you know, putting this money in right now and not waiting till the end of the fiscal year. Anyone else? All right. Okay, there was a motion by Vice Mayor Keating and a second by Councilmember Arredondo Savage, but no more comments? Please vote. And that motion passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. Okay, I'm just going to skip over here. All right here, next up is Item Number 7, the Nonconsent Agenda. All items listed on the nonconsent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form at this time. First up, we have miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. The first item under the section is 7A1, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the approval of the Papco North Tempe Character Area 1 Plan dated December 2021, which generally encompasses all the city lands north of the Loop 202 freeway. The applicant is the City of Tempe. Council, would you like an overview of this, or are you good? All right. With that said, then I would look for a motion on Item 7A1. Moved by Councilmember Garland, seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. Next item under the section is 7A2, which is to adopt a notice of intent to enter into a retail development tax incentive agreement with South Pier Tempe Holdings LLC to develop a master-planned mixed-use project at 1190 East Vista del Lago Drive. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Keating. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote. And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 7A3, which is to approve the utilization of a 10-month City of Mesa Cooperative Contract with Western States Petroleum Incorporated for the purchase of vehicle and equipment fuels. Council, any comments or discussion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Vice Mayor Keating. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 7A4, which is to award a construction contract to Felix Construction Company for the Weld 20 Improvements Marketplace Project located at 1900 East Rio Salado Parkway. Council, any comments or discussion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Vice Mayor Keating. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 7A5, which is to award a construction contract to AJP Electric Incorporated for the Alameda Drive 48th Street to Rural Road project located along East Alameda Drive from South 48th Street to South Rural Road. Council, any comments or discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember QB?
I just want to commend Robert Yabis and Bobby, Bonnie Richardson for all of their public engagement expertise and getting all the grants together for this project. It's been much desired, much needed, and there is great excitement in the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Any other comments or discussion from council?
Move to approve.
Moved by Vice Mayor Keating. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. Okay, I've got a note here. I need to go back to Item 7A2. Let me bring up Maria Lochner from our Economic Development Department. Maria, apparently there was something I got. Do I need to recall the entire vote? And if so, how do I do that legally?
Mayor, we just need the findings of fact on the record.
Just a little presentation for the record, okay? So Maria, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here to provide you with the factual findings to assist you in connection with the request before you, which is to enter into a notice of intent to enter into a retail development tax incentive agreement with South Pier Tempe Holdings. Tempe intends to enter into an agreement with South Pier Tempe Holdings LLC to develop a mixed-use project valued at $1,800,000 on 12.43 acres over 15 years. And that will include a provision whereby the city agrees to rebate an amount of the unrestricted portion of the transaction privilege tax and use tax levied by the city on construction projects pursuant to Chapter 16, Article 4 and Article 6, respectively, of Section 16 of the Tempe City Code. And we have until December 31st, or they have until December 31st, 2027, to request that rebate. The city will rebate 50% of the unrestricted portion of the transaction privilege tax, which is currently 1.2%, that is actually corrected, I'm sorry, collected, in a total amount not to exceed $1,500,000 over the five-year period. Before the city may approve or enter into the agreement, it must make specific findings required by the statute and obtain an independent third-party verification. We have done so, and the verification contains the financial analysis of the impact of the agreement to be as follows. That South Pier is expected to generate an estimated $4 million in primary direct tax revenues to the City of Tempe every year once it is completed. This annual amount is more than two times the amount of the incentive being offered. Finally, South Pier has stated that they would not have chosen to develop in Tempe if it hadn't been for the incentives, as they have been considering developments in other states. And I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Thank you, Maria. Council, any comments or questions for Maria? Oh, sounds good.
Thank you.
You have your findings of fact.
Mayor, I think we're going to look to affirm the vote for the record.
Oh, so you do need to reaffirm the vote? Oh, man, all right. So, Vice Mayor Keating said he may change his vote this time, just to make it interesting. Okay, do we want to clear the board then, Madam Clerk? We can do it all over again? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Who had the motion? Okay, moved by Councilmember Garland, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Yes, please vote. Nope.
Hold on. You gotta add it.
We need to do like a voice thing?
We can do a voice. Let's see, Councilmember Garland? Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. All right. Next up here, item, last item in the section is 7A6, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing a maximum dollar amount for an individual job order of up to $1.2 million for the purpose of procuring construction services for the chilled water loop analysis, City Hall Campus Fifth Street crossing. Council, are there any comments or discussion on this item?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion? Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Arredondo Savage and is seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. The next section on the nonconsent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for January 13th, 2022. First item under the section is 7B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopted ordinance approving an amendment to development agreement and exchange agreement and escrow instructions for city-owned real property located on five parcels at the southeast corner of First Street and Rio Salado Parkway and providing for the conveyance of certain real property in connection with the realignment of First Street and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement and related documents with Verdi Opportunity Tempe LLC and Verdi Opportunity Health LLC to effect such transaction. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any comments or requests to speak on this item?
Nothing for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
Move to approve.
All right, any comments from council? You have one? Okay, all right, then I'll just completely reiterate that the second and final public hearing on this, oh, you want to go? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not going to.
Did anyone want to speak on this item on 7A1?
I do, Mayor.
Okay.
It's hard to convince you to hear this. Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Yeah? Okay. I have a couple concerns in regards. All right, I had asked a lot of questions in the first and foremost day of the day. Thank you so much. Anyway, all right. I'd ask a lot of questions in regards to the exchange of the property, what the city will be getting in regards to. One of my questions were, and I'm still not really sure, I understand that this agreement was something that we agreed upon not long ago, like 2015. Probably fine. I understand that. I respect that. Move over. Here. Is that better?
You got it.
Okay. Anyway, so it's always been my experience in the past, when we have worked with developers and negotiate with women that we can, some things that come with tuition or projects like that, or something for our portion of the.
My sense in this, I'm not arguing with the amount that is actually paid for the property of land, but I am very concerned in regards to what the public benefit is. I feel like this benefit is like 100% for the development, so I'm barely confused about that. I guess I would like to know if we are setting a new precedent, or have there been other types of deals or exchanges where an agreement looks similar to this? I just, I don't remember that in my experience. I definitely would like to see that. I am a little concerned that if we are gifting of the land, that it shouldn't be just for the development, that the gifting of the land should actually be for a public benefit. And so I really need to be convinced that there is a public benefit outside of what is happening right here within this development. I know that this has never been in our transportation master plan. I don't believe that the, what we're receiving in regards to the realignment of First Street is even in our CIP. So my thought process is, this is just not what I would have expected to see. I'm okay with the dollar amount that's assigned to it. I'm just not okay with, I believe the benefit going back 100% into the project. So Mayor, my ask would be is, I'd like to see a little bit more history of some of the other projects that look similar to this, when we have gifted the land. What was the public benefit? What did we really get for that? I'd also like to really understand, I did get some statistic from Shelley Seiler in regards to any types of accidents, or what kind of safety would be improved if the First Street alignment was changed. And so I get it, there has been a few accidents there, nothing too severe, maybe a couple over the last five years that would benefit from a different alignment. But technically, I'm just really very concerned that, I want to go to our residents and say, "Look, this is a really good thing, and this is really good for the community, and let me tell you why." And I don't feel that right now. So, until I do, I feel like I'm still going to continue to ask the hard questions, really try to understand what this public benefit is, how it benefits the entire community, and then I'd feel a little bit better. So that would be my two cents of things I'd like to see before second reading.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Let me go to Councilmember QB, then I'll.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you're looking for consensus, that was very eloquent, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, and I would like to also see that information presented to us.
Sounds good. Councilmember Garland?
So, I would like, I agree. I'd love the same thing. Coming on? There you go. I agree. I would like to see the same information, but I'd also like, one of the notes that I had written down here on my paper is, did the city staff, is there, where is there a record that we wanted that street, that we requested that road to be moved? Is there anything in record that says that we've done that? I'd just like to know that information also.
Okay, sounds good. I guess what we're probably looking for here, just from the conversation, is maybe a Mr. City Manager, Madam City Attorney, is there some way before the second public hearing on January 13th to go back and provide the council with the information that's being requested, and perhaps, you know, even work with the applicant to see if we can come up with what information, whether it's the, you know, kind of the original deal and talking about whether or not the realignment of the street was in the first deal. To Councilmember Arredondo Savage and Councilmember QB's questions about public benefit for the project and trying to make sure that we vet that out, you know, even more fully before January 13th, would it be okay to ask you both to kind of work on that and potentially work with staff and the applicant?
Certainly, Mayor. We'll get that done prior to the second hearing.
Thank you. Any other council members, any comments, questions on Item 7B1? Okay. Once again, reminding everyone that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for January 13th, 2022. The last item under the section is 7B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing a general plan density map amendment from medium density to high-density urban core, an ordinance for a zoning map amendment to MU4, and an amended planned area development overlay, and approve a development plan review for a new seven-story mixed-use development consisting of 200 dwelling units and 1,036 square feet of commercial uses for First and Farmer located at 206 South Farmer Avenue. Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Oh, yeah. What else does this do? Can I drive it home? Nice. And I have control today. Okay. I have control of my PowerPoint. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Darren Sender, Sender Associates, 464 South Farmer in Tempe. And I understand that we're having some difficulty with the WebEx tonight, so our traffic engineer, Dawn Cartier, is on there, and Brienne was helping us out, trying to get her on the phone. So if we need that, we can get her on. If not, I have a statement that we can read.
Try to dial that number if you'd like.
Yeah, I think Brienne has it. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Well, we're very excited to be here tonight. Most of you have seen the predecessor project to this, and.
Your call cannot be completed as dialed.
Well, then there's that.
Phone lines are down. Everything is down. So tonight, we also have with me John Kane with Architecton. So tonight, we also have with me John Kane with Architecton. I have Sam Gordon with Wexford Development. And Nate Kirby, who I said his name incorrectly last time, he is with Coles Scheller. They are the landscape architects, which is a significant portion of this project. That, it's a big, a big portion of this project. See, there's our team. Location of the property, you're probably familiar with. It is located along Farmer Avenue, just south of First Street, south of the APS substation, right across the street from the yard, and right across the street from the new Beam project that is under construction currently. There's another look at that APS substation to the north, offices and parking to the west, the Beam and the yard to the east. And then we're surrounded by things like the lodge and the vacant city site there as well. Kind of in that unique corner of the, of the portion of the city here. Current, the existing site location, you can see it's an older industrial project. It's GID zoning currently. You can see the APS substation there. This is the current landscape palette, if you could call it that. This is the sidewalk we walk by from our office down the street all the time when we take walks in the neighborhood. And we are hoping to upgrade that significantly. This picture was taken today, this is the Beam project going in on Farmer. So you can see kind of the, the commercial aspect of Farmer Avenue and sort of what it's turning into today and what it's becoming. And that's a view down Farmer from in front of our property, in front of the project site. On the left here, you can see the 2019 approval that was made by the city council for the existing approved office building on this property. Very, very similar architecture and very, very similar size, scope, shape, pretty much everything. When Sam was moving forward with construction drawings, COVID hit, and everything kind of came to a stop. Offices shut down, people started working from home, and he can explain that a little bit more, he'll do a brief presentation as well. We had to kind of rethink this project a little bit, and I think he challenged John Kane to come up with a project that still looked the same, was the same height, the same intensity, same, same look to the building. And he did it. I think he did a great job in making that happen. I was actually quite surprised that a residential building could look this darn cool. And he will go through all of the amazing sustainability elements to this project. It does incorporate 20 low-income housing units that we are working through, a covenant with development agreement with, with council, and a giplet, a rate giplet. So we'll be moving forward with that. As soon as the policy is finalized, we can get the policy done. We will move forward with that. But we were quite, quite happy to see the building end up being, actually look better than the original. The other interesting thing that kind of came out of that was that the approved office building versus what we're proposing today as a residential project, the number of people on the project, the actual intensity of the project, the kind of the feel of the project went down considerably. From an office building that would support over 400 people to a residential project that has, you know, right around 100, 250 people. From 387 cars to 141 cars. From 1,836 total vehicle trips per day pursuant to our traffic analysis to 620 total trips as a residential project, and spread out more throughout the day as well. So it's a significantly less, significantly less traffic than the office. And then it's just a much less intense, it's a much more compatible use. We've got a lot of commercial going in on the Beam right now across the street, so it really kind of softens that edge on Farmer Avenue. Our neighborhood outreach has been pretty extensive. We wanted to make sure we were open with the neighborhood. We want to make sure we were talking with them early, early on. So we've had, since May 5th, we actually reached out in April. Since May 5th, we've had six meetings with the president of Riverside Neighborhood Association, and at least 30 phone calls on top of that. We wanted to make sure that, that, you know, they understood what we were doing, they were comfortable with what we were doing. We created a neighborhood meeting website so that neighbors could obtain all the information, all the drawings, neighborhood meeting information, public hearing information. We held one virtual and one live in person, so to make sure everybody had an opportunity to attend. We had about six neighbors attend the virtual meeting and seven at the live meeting. We did not receive any comments on our website from that. We included a sign posting, we included the QR code on the sign posting so make sure we could get that scanned so they could go to the website right from there. Let's see here, we had a meeting with some other residents in the neighborhood, and I received one phone call on the project. So we've been working pretty hard, I wanted to make sure that they had the information that they needed. I provided Mr. Yates with all of the applications, materials on a zip drive, as well as I was printing them, and I actually, my printer broke, so we couldn't finalize them all, but we made sure that he had everything on the zip drive for all of our submittals that we did. During these meetings, it was requested that we do a few things for the neighborhood as good neighbors. One of those things was a traffic calming, some on-street parking passes, restrict construction traffic, include the low-income housing for 25 to 30 years instead of just 25 years, and include in sustainable elements. One request that, that we just couldn't agree to was that they wanted more commercial, and there's just so much commercial on that street, we just didn't think it was feasible for this project and its location to, to add more commercial. But we wanted to make sure that we understood, you know, why the neighborhood was, was going through their plan to add more speed homes, so we talked a lot about that. We talked a lot about the on-street parking. We don't feel our residents are going to be parking on the street, it's so far away. The, Wilson Drive is directly, I'm sorry, Roosevelt, no, Wilson Drive is directly to the west of us. It's got permit parking now, so there's no parking allowed there. First Street, there's no parking, Fifth Street, there's no parking. So, you know, it really would be not really easy to park along those neighborhood streets. So we talked to Mr. Yates about the current permit parking situation and then the future permit parking situation. It sounded like Roosevelt needed some permit parking and that they were potentially moving forward with that. So Sam Gordon said, "Well, why don't we help them pay for that permit parking for the residents? Because it sounds like it's kind of expensive to have permits for the neighborhood." So we, we offered up on that front, they said, "Hey, we'll, we'll do 75 homes in this area along Wilson and Roosevelt." They'll receive three on-street parking passes for three years, and that's including the one they get for free and the one guest they get for free. So these are some of the things that we talked to the neighborhood about, and we wanted to make clear that, that we were willing to do. There were a few other things, like making sure the construction traffic didn't travel through the neighborhood. You know, we, we don't want that to happen. So Mr. Gordon agreed to restrict the construction traffic to, you know, First Street, Rio Salado, Farmer, Ash, and University. And we would make that a requirement in the contracts with the contractors and make sure that didn't happen. Let's see, what else was in there? During these discussions, we wanted to make sure that, that it was understood that we would do these things. We're not just saying we'll do it. So we did one thing at the DRC hearing is we offered up a couple of these as a stipulation. So we offered up that we would go ahead and, let me see if I have them right here. We offered up the low-income housing as a stipulation, that's in your staff reports. We also heard that they were concerned, obviously, about the vertical plantings. We made sure we added that as a stipulation, that they will be maintained by a professional landscape company and not by the residents, which is obviously significant. And also, we wanted to make sure that they understood that, you know, we weren't going to be adding height to this building after approval. So we would stipulate, along with the PAD, we would stipulate to the maximum, maximum building height as well. So we ended, ended up discussing all of these things. It was requested we put them in writing, we went ahead and put them in writing as an agreement to the neighborhood between us. And what we heard back was that, from an email that we received from Mr. Yates last night, that, you know, they agreed in principle to, to these things, but they really wanted them to have a little more teeth. So, you know, we wanted the support of the neighborhood, we were really hoping to, to help the neighborhood and, and show them that this project was, was a very, a significant, similar project to what was existing that's approved today. But as you probably heard from the letters that were read into the record tonight, I don't think they have gotten there, so that agreement, as, as Mr. Yates said, is, is not moving forward right now. However, we're still open to it, so we're still, still happy to work until January. Okay, and that, with that, I'll have Sam come up and then I'll have John talk a little bit about the architecture.
Good evening. Nice to see all of you. Thank you, council, for giving me this opportunity to share some background on the First and Farmer project and how we got to where we are today. As many of you, as many of you know, Tempe has become a home away from home for us. We are extremely dedicated and committed to this community for the long term. We own several different properties here, and we're really focused on creating real estate that enhances the community, whether it be residential use or restaurants we're bringing to the community that we know firsthand from, from speaking with residents, that they're, they're very excited for. We bought this property about four years ago, and as Darren mentioned, and you're all aware, there was a office project unanimously approved in 2019 for an office building. We wanted to create something unique, sustainable, we retained John Kane to do that, and, and John is a very talented architect who has similar visions as we do and, and the potential that, that built, the potential to make buildings better in different ways here in Tempe. And soon after obtaining council approval, COVID-19 pandemic happened, which really stopped all our leasing efforts, shifted our focus to the health and safety of our existing tenants and other existing buildings, working with them to survive the, what became an extremely difficult 12 to 18-month period with many of our restaurant tenant sales coming to a complete halt on Mill Avenue. As the pandemic calmed, we decided that there was some uncertainty around the future need for as much office space as maybe was needed before the pandemic. That coupled with the multiple dense office projects that were announced in close proximity to us, the Beam, 100 Mill, a few others. We decided that opposed to doing nothing, shifting this project to a residential use made a lot of sense, not just for us, but for the area as well, for several reasons. And so as Darren mentioned, I asked John to amend the project to a residential use but bring roughly the same size, density, massing as what was already approved. So there's some, there's obviously a lot of similarities, but some important differences I want to run through quickly. First is affordable housing. Since I've come here to Tempe, there's been a lot of talk about affordable housing. I've seen a few projects do it, but not many. And we really wanted to show that it's possible on a building like this. We are asking for a small giplet, it does not nearly cover the, the additional cost to, for this low-income housing, which is 60% API, not just affordable housing. But we really wanted to, to show that it can be included in a project like this. Sustainability, it was a focus for us in the office project, it's a bigger focus for us here. The shifting it to a residential use allowed us to improve upon that. John's going to speak about several things we're doing right after me here on sustainability, but it's a hugely important issue for us as a business and both for this project and others in the future. Third, the sheer number of people, as Darren just went through, will be substantially less. One of the residents made a comment earlier tonight that, that this residential building would be, have a lot more people than the office building, and we've communicated several times that's not the case. The, the office building at full capacity would have around 440 people, this is about 40% of that, about one-third the traffic trips, and about 40% of the parking that the office building had. And lastly, with the residential building, you know, we, we are having a small retail use as part of the project. We envision a neighborhood coffee shop. We, we have a really strong focus on activating the streetscape here, which is, I think, a little easier to do in a residential project as people are, you know, more around throughout the day. An office building, people show up in the morning for work in their cars, work throughout the day, leaving their cars. Sometimes they'll never even get out on their, on their feet around the building. So we really are focused on enhancing the street, the streetscape, incorporating some Tempe historical art in that space, which I was working with Riverside Neighborhood Association. And, and lastly, on, on the Riverside Neighborhood Association, as Darren mentioned, I reached out to the president of the association back in March or April, invited him to dinner, and I left that dinner feeling quite encouraged that we could come to terms on, on, on some sort of agreement for this project, where they could be excited about it as much, you know, as, as possible. And that, you know, kicked off an eight-month, six or seven in-person meetings, 30 phone calls. And we ended up with this agreement last night that laid out all these things that Darren mentioned, and we came away last night feeling like we were in agreement on all the high-level terms, and, and they wanted a lawyer to review it, which was totally fine. And woke up this morning and heard a complete 180 and something completely different than we were told last night, which was the third or fourth time that that happened throughout the process and working with the, the neighborhood. So I'm extremely frustrated, I'm disappointed that we don't have their support for this project, but it's not for lack of trying. So with that, I'll have John come up and talk a little bit about sustainability.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of council. See if I can. So architecturally, we've kept, as mentioned, kind of the same idea. The big idea here is it's really about bringing landscape into the urban realm as we build and intensify our cities, landscapes kind of disappearing. So really excited that Sam was really open to this idea about bringing landscape in. And Nate's going to be here to talk about the landscape because it's, it is the architecture. The idea is that this building is about framing the landscape and actually making it about that. The idea also is that it's self-shaded, so one of the things we really want to do is try to figure out how, through the architecture tessellation, we can shade the windows. So throughout the course of the day, these balconies and these planters all will protect the, the building as, as the sun moves around it. We're going to talk about kind of the, the idea that the landscape's a desert palette, so it's about low-water use. We're also looking at strategies of how the roof water can actually be used to carry down through the planters for irrigation. We've got to put drains, we've got to do some other things anyway, so we're looking for the synergies that I think we'll be really excited. The roof's designed for PV, and we're going to put the PV on day one. So, so we'll have solar panels on the roof, so we've optimized that for, for that effect. And then, one of the really kind of things that I'm personally really excited about is we've, if you've been on Farmer, the sidewalk's right up against the street, it's a really narrow street with the cars right there. What we're going to do is actually do a bioswale, kind of a green, an infrastructure, green infrastructure project that we don't have to do, but this is something the Sustainability Commission's been talking about. We really want to get pilot projects to show how this works. So we cut the curb to actually bring the stormwater from the street, filter it through the, the landscape, but also helps the tree growth, you get better aeration for the trees. So it's a really exciting kind of thing, and it also kind of helps create, I think, a really nicer pedestrian experience along Farmer. And we really like to show this as a case study of how LID or low-intensive development can be done and kind of work through the code issues and some of the things that we'll need to do to, to pull this off. And then, as Sam mentioned, again, this idea of residential units, the cafe in the lobby, all being about, you know, activating day one, the urban pedestrian environment for the building. And the last thing, too, that's really interesting, that we've been really interested in our firm, is how to deal with heat island effect and how our buildings, and our building skins can actually help reduce that. So we're trying to do a self-shaded skin, so it's a macro tessellation, but then the finer grime. finer grain of the skin also helps reduce the amount of surface, plus the plants will also go a long way. So we're studying and refining those issues, too, as we move forward to it. The required kind of elevations, this is a building that's not seen in elevation. It's designed from the pedestrian experience from down below. And then, one of the other things that was really important, because we have a professional landscape maintenance crew taking care of it, we didn't want to do it through the units. We designed this so that all the way around the building, we can get to it with a boom lift, and that's how they're going to take care of the plants. So we will have that maintained landscape professionally done, just the required site plans. The other thing that we did on this versus the office, we were actually able to move the building further north, towards the utility yard to the north, and then also pull the building further to the east away, so more setback actually from the west and south. So we've really kind of adjusted that. We don't have any roof activities like we did on the office. We took those also off the project, just the fire access, all the, got to make the refuse work. And now I'm going to hand it over to the real star, Nate, who's going to talk about how cool this landscaping is. Thank you very much.
Yes, Councilmember Cubey.
Before you go, could I just ask a question, John, about the height? So Darren said it's the same height. The height is a little more, but is it the parapets that creates the height?
Yeah, we have some really clear diagrams that help on that.
There was some confusion about that.
So the office building is shown on the left here, where we had the elevator shaft up to 83. The parapet was at 68, but we also had the roof deck and roof cabana and everything that was at about 77. What we're proposing is that the total building height will be at 77, including the elevator and the parapets will be just a little below that, about a foot below that. And there's one more, right? So this shows kind of between the office on the left and the residential on the right.
Thank you. That's fair and clear. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Council. Thanks for having us. My name is Nathaniel Kirby. I'm a landscape architect at Colewell Sheiller Landscape Architecture. I just want to provide a high-level sense of the landscape character for the project, First and Farmer, for you all. To start off, we just want to provide some of the landscape goals for the project. Number one, we want to provide air-adapted plant material for low-water use, just since we are in the desert, just want to provide that for sustainability. We also want to provide a variety of texture and colors throughout the year, provide sustainable design and low-maintenance, provide water harvesting, and one of the examples of that is the bioswales along Farmer that John just mentioned. We want to provide spectacular garden views from the residences with the height that we're providing, and then again, provide multifunctional spaces for a range of diverse uses. So these images are just some example images for the character that we're looking for. The top-left image is just a sense, not as much density of that image, but just some of the site amenities that we want to provide along Farmer for the public realm, from benches, and also in the bottom-right image, just kind of an idea of the breakout space of the cafe and just the public amenities that we will want to provide beyond the residence. The two middle images are some images of what we're thinking for the roof deck or the pool deck area, just a range of seating and, again, roof gardens and greenery for that area for the residents. Top-right is going beyond just the ground level vegetation on a horizontal plane, but looking at it in more of a 3D vertical landscape, where we're kind of trying to provide more of a hanging gardens-type concept. And then, bottom-left is just another example of the bioswales along Farmer to provide supplemental irrigation and sustainability for the proposed plant material. Quickly, just want to go through the ground-level landscape. It's pretty simple for the trees. This is for all the plant material on the ground level, Texas Red Bud, Fantex Ash, and Heritage Live Oak, all air-adapted and low-water-use plant material, specifically using the Fantex Ash within that bioswale that we mentioned. Quickly going through, not going to mention all the plant material for you, but just giving you an idea of some of the shrubs and vines on the ground level, creating that lush environment for the pedestrian experience, and then using some of the accents to really make it pop and create some of the drama on the ground level. And then analyzing some of the facades of the building, especially on the south side, where you're getting a lot more sun and a lot more exposure, just using plant material that will create that cascading effect that I mentioned, but also going to survive in that a little bit more harsh environment and cascading, and just the plant material that will survive in that environment. Moving on to the west facade, similar plant material, but even more harsh of an environment, but we just want to make sure that we're providing plant material that's going to survive up there and succeed. And then, moving to the north side, where you get more shade, just more shade-loving plant material. And on the east side, similar concept, but not as much for the south and west, more harsh zones. Just want to give you a high-level plant material and what we're looking for on the landscape character. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, Cubey, you had a question about the building height, so we went through this already. Tallest point difference, the top to the top, top is about five-and-a-half feet shorter than the elevator core of the office building that's approved, and the mechanical screen difference, which is kind of the part of the building that you would see at the top, is about three feet taller. And that just has to do with the building, floor plates are different, so you saw that. We have heard some comments about the density or the precedent in the neighborhood. We feel, and we've talked to staff a lot about this quite a bit, and we also talked to the DRC about this. This is kind of getting direction from them to move forward. The property is in the northwest or northeast quarter of this Riverside neighborhood. We're right on the edge. We're a Long Farmer Avenue, which is becoming a much more commercial street, obviously with the beam construction, and we're kind of that really kind of unique area that encompasses First Street and Ash and Farmer and the beach park, as well as some of the newer projects where Kaios and things like that are happening. As you can see there, it's definitely a unique area on the very, very edge of the neighborhood. So we feel that we're not touching into the neighborhood. Our property doesn't go onto Wilson. We don't go anywhere into this neighborhood, but yet we face Farmer. And Farmer Avenue is, obviously you saw the imagery, is becoming much more of a commercial aspect. And we've talked to staff a lot about transition and buffering and creating a transition space. So this transition space is coming over from things that are happening to the east, to the west, and how we transition from that. And here's our project, you know, Tempe Depot over to the east, the Beam Office Building next to us, and then our project sitting right there to the west, as it transitions down nicely to the neighborhood, so you can see here.
Yes, Councilmember Adams.
Yes, can you go back to that slide before? So, right, so that's why, I guess, I'm a little confused about the density, because we are going to have a lot more density right across the way, right?
More intensity, yes, much more.
Like 22 stories, 24 stories?
Yeah, across the railroad, absolutely. The Beam project, the office portion of it's 98 feet, so there's going to be a lot of people there, and that's why the kind of the traffic and everything is so much less intense than that. It really fits well with, we're not adding that much to this area. It's going to be really equalized with this project.
Because I know we always talk about the step-by, you know, step-down approach, and that's what I'm seeing on this slide, that that's what's going on with it.
That's exactly what we tried to do, and that's exactly what Sam told John to make sure he did, make sure that height stepped down and was lower as we went to the west.
I have more comments, but I'll wait till you're done with your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, obviously, what you had just mentioned, Councilwoman Adams, the site is located along this much more commercial kind of urban streetscape, and we face that, and that's really how the project interacts with the community. Although, our project interacting with the streetscape is a series of walk-ups, residential walk-ups. So we continue the residential walk-ups that are already along Farmer Avenue right onto this project, so we soften the edge. We're softening that edge of Farmer, yet we're presenting our face to Farmer, not to the neighborhood, to the west.
Quick thing, Ms. Senator, Councilmember Cubey has a quick question.
Yes, can you tell me where the affordable housing units are within the context of the building?
I believe they're scattered throughout, but I believe several of them are the walk-ups.
So will they be the same in construction and amenities as the others?
As far as I know.
Like linoleum and affordable housing.
No, they're not going to be out in the back of the site.
I grew up in linoleum.
What do you have in this, linoleum? Go on.
If you want linoleum, we can do linoleum.
Thank you.
That's a very good point, and I actually appreciate asking that question, because my whole thing is, you know, when talking, and this council's talked a lot about trying to remove the stigma from affordable housing in our community, so I'm really glad to hear you say that, you know, there will be 20 affordable units contained in the project, but they're going to be of the same exact construction as every other unit in the building, which is what continues to take away that stigma of people living in affordable housing versus market-rate housing. So I appreciate Councilmember Cubey asking that question and appreciate your commitment to that.
And Mayor Woods, Councilmember Cubey, they also will be scattered throughout the unit types, so they won't all be studios. There's a mix of studios, ones and twos.
Excellent, thank you.
So these are the stipulations that we added at the DRC that we are covenanting to include the 20 low-income units for a period of 25 years. We've requested 30, but the way the new policy is written on valuing the low-income units, it tends to sway towards 25, but we can actually, we can covenant to 30. Our gyplet would just be 25. It's a weird calculation, the way it works, and I wish Sarah was here to explain it, but that is our first stipulation that we had added, along with the vertical plannings and the maximum building height.
Quick question, Ms. Senator, so you're saying that the rate goes to 25, but you're going to covenant to 30. Does that mean that you're actually, or your client's going to be sort of losing money in the process by actually extending by an additional five years?
Yes.
I'm not a mathematician, but I was just sort of doing the math in my head and going, it seems like you would lose money in that proposition.
It honestly doesn't really cover the loss to begin with, but we had a request for 30 years. Mr. Gordon had agreed to 30, and then now with the way that the new gyp evaluation for the low-income units is, it's based upon cap rates and not necessarily time periods. So the cap rates fall right in a 25-year period, and so it looks like that's going to have to be the time period for the gyplet. But if we want the actual units to be 30 years, then we can certainly look at doing that.
I was just going to say, I appreciate your willingness to do that, because sometimes people will come back if they say, well, I know I had a conversation with you about that, I think Councilmember Cubey might have as well, in asking for the additional five years for you and Mr. Gordon, and you didn't come back and say, well, we'll do the additional five years, but we want some other kind of exception or to continue waiving fees. You just basically said, yes, we'll do it, even if it causes the project to lose some additional funds. So I appreciate your willingness to do that and not coming back to the table to negotiate for kind of more savings on the permitting side or things like that, so I just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Adams.
Well, I have just a quick question. About the affordable housing units and how people get selected to live in those units, will you be working with the city? Will Levon, Amazing Levon, be helping to, you won't be responsible for figuring out who qualifies the city would be?
Well, no. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cubey, Levon had mentioned that he would give us the parameters for that. We would then have to enforce those parameters, and then they would do an annual review.
I see.
So he would review those annually, because we first thought that maybe Levon would want to do that, and he said, no, this is how we want to do it.
He's underutilized. He doesn't operate.
He's got nothing better to do than check our residents now, but it will be in concert with the city, and it will be overseen by the city.
Very good.
I appreciated the fact that you actually added an adjective before Levon's name, that he's now the Amazing Levon. Sounded like a magician, but he actually is kind of a magician, so quite honestly, it fits, so.
He is the Amazing Levon.
Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the wonderful presentation this evening. I'm a huge supporter of Vision Zero, so I love speed bumps. It's like one of my favorite things, and I love it that you have put those all around the project to keep the traffic down, and it's so important for everyone's safety, and we need to work even harder than we are at getting more safety bumps up, but I really commend you for that. You have some of my favorite things in this project. I love the look of it, all the green, the sustainability of the project. It's really unique. I know there's one sort of like it in Scottsdale, but I think this one is so much better, so that's really good to see. I love that neighborhood outreach, that you have been working over and over with the neighborhoods, and we don't always agree 100%. That's just kind of the nature of life, but, you know, you've had the opportunities to bring them to the table and get their feedback. And I believe this was a 6-1 DRC decision. Is that correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so I trust those folks a lot. I love the lessening of the traffic, that picture that you had with how much better the traffic is going to be, it's going to be like 150 fewer people, 246 fewer cars. That's huge. Vehicle trips, 66% less. I was really listening to your presentation. Can you tell?
Yes, thank you. I can't find it.
And just less intense and all, and so I just, I love how you brought those numbers down, and that also contributes to Vision Zero. When we have less cars on the road, especially in this congested area, it's so important for everyone's safety. And the affordable housing, that's really nice, and I'm very, very happy about the affordable housing that you've put into this project, so thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's see, Councilmember Cubey?
It's rather rare when we see an affordable housing project. You know, it's only 10%, but it's an affordable housing project nonetheless, come to downtown, so it's really pleasing. I think it's, John, hats off to you. It's the most beautiful project I've seen since I've been on council. I think it's gorgeous. I love so many aspects of it, but I just need to be able to see the gyplet and see a defined public benefit and just see how that works out. We don't have that yet before us, so I don't want to commit tonight that I'm a yes voter. I really want to see that defined and just enumerated.
Yes, absolutely, and Councilmember Cubey, we're just waiting for the policy to finalize. And we did a draft economic analysis with the draft policy, and it showed a significant public benefit using that draft policy valuation.
Yes, because to me, the only use I like to see with gyplets are incredible job creation or, you know, defined job creation or affordable housing, so I'm hoping to see those numbers so we can really solidify, so I can solidify my decision. But I do appreciate that there'll be less traffic, that there'll be less, you know, people and intensity, and as I said, I mean, I think that the project is gorgeous, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Any other councilmembers any comments? Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Right, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Darren, you and your team for coming. Of course, Sam, I always do appreciate you. You've been an awesome partner to Tempe, so I'm certainly grateful for that. And John, you and your team, this is awesome building. I agree with Councilmember Cubey. This is, it looks so cool. It looked cool when it originally came to us the first time, and I think it was so exciting to see it then. It's super exciting to see that design now, something different and unique, which I guess I never even expected to see, and, you know, I'm grateful that you've kept that design and really enhanced that. You know, with that said, as much as, you know, I always like to lead with something really good and then kind of bring in some of the things that definitely concern me. And I will tell you, there are about three main reasons that I'm just not quite there to be able to support your project. And the first and foremost is density. We talked a little bit about density. I know there was some reference to here about density and height. Those two don't really go together. Density isn't just about height. I mean, density is about occupancy. And before, this is about a 25-dwelling unit per acre. We had thought we were going to get somewhere in between where we thought it was going to be about 130, and this is, I mean, this is big. This is, we talk about 65 dwelling units per acre, and I will tell you, back in the day, and I don't remember what year this was, we had a project that was happening over there, and one of the things that we did when we talked about the urban core was protecting our neighborhoods. And the way to protect our neighborhoods was to have the step-down and to have a buffer zone in between the urban core, which is more than 65 dwelling units per acre. That is the urban core, that and above. Your project is 130 dwelling units per acre, so technically, we are putting the urban core density... density in the buffer zone. And that is something I promised the residents years ago that I would commit to as we work and build the urban core, that we continue to protect our neighborhoods. And so for me, it's really hard to get there for me. I made this promise a long time ago. I want to hold to the promise, and if the neighbors have some concerns, they should. And I certainly respect that, and I appreciate the ones that came here tonight. I'm sorry, I know you guys operated and talked to them in good faith. We're really hoping that you'd be able to come to some, some commitment, and I will tell you, I'm kind of glad they stood their ground because I feel like if they feel that their neighborhood is in jeopardy, then we need to understand that. So first and foremost, that's kind of one of the things that I was really concerned about. The second one is parking. I know this is under park, and I laugh because I know Councilmember QB loves this. This is great, so it's totally fine, and I understand that. I get it. That's the wave of the future, right? But what I didn't see in this at all was, is how are you going to encourage people to get out of their cars? Like, are you going to be offering metro passes? Is there going to be some incentive to encourage, you know, ride share, things like that? I didn't see anything in that development agreement that would really say, yeah, look, we are certainly committed to that, and these are some of the things that we're going to give our residents? Because technically, if I look at it right, you have 250 bedrooms and 141 parking spaces. That is not very many. And so if there's guests that come or people that come and want to visit these individuals, where are they going to park? I think that's a big issue. I think the neighbors should be super concerned about that. So anyway, for me, because of the density, because of me just wanting to really make sure that we continue to protect our neighborhoods, and really, I want to honor what I committed before, which is that buffer zone, to really ensure that the urban core has a buffer into our neighborhoods, because it's really hard for me to get here. And I do love the look of it. I think it's great. I'm very curious to see what the giblet would look like. I want to see what the terms of that may be. I love the idea of being able to incorporate affordable housing and really cool downtown buildings. I think that's awesome. I think that's great. But that hasn't really been vetted out yet. We haven't even seen anything about it, so I'll be curious to stay open-minded to that. But again, I just want to say, I really do appreciate this work. I know this is a super cool building, and I love it, but at the same time, right now the way it is, I will not be supporting this project. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Any other councilmembers, comments, questions? Councilmember Garland?
I was just going to say that I, I love the look of this building. Every time I look at it and every time, I keep staring at that over there. Oh, okay. No, sorry, it was my phone. I really do like the look of the building. I do want to get some more information when we get the giblet information back, so I want to hold off on what I would like to do with this, but I do like that, I do like the idea of the solar panels up there. I don't mind the decrease in parking if we are doing everything we can to encourage people to do the walking and not, because there's out parking there, there's going to be parking in the neighborhoods, there's going to be parking in the streets or whatever. So I would like to see more information on that, but I do love the building, and I like the idea and the concept of the green on the side. I just think it looks spectacular. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Anyone else? Comments? Yep, sure.
Can I just say one thing about the elephant food?
Yes, please.
I'm really pleased about that because Cory knows that when I canvass, I often eat people's elephant food cactus because it's very high in antioxidants. It's great on salads. You must try it.
I tried elephant food for the first time, hanging out with Councilmember QB one day.
How was it?
It was, it's a plant. No, it was good, it was good, so. I just want to say really quickly as well, before we go to some additional public comment here, I think, you know, I think the building is absolutely beautiful for everybody. I think everyone has said that up here, you know, to a person. It's an absolutely gorgeous building, quite honestly, and I love the sustainable features in the building. I love the street activation. I think that I'm fine with the parking. You know, I live in the downtown area, most people know, right around Fifth and Maple, and I rarely take my car out anymore. The reality is, I'm so close between both of my jobs at the City of Tempe and Arizona State University, I pretty much walk everywhere, and I regularly walk out by where this project would be built because I'm always at Culinary Dropout or the Lodge, and so I'm always walking along that section. I'm actually glad to see the conversion from the office building to the multifamily because I think as Mr. Gordon talked about with the beam being across the street and all the office and the large parking garage that's being built currently, I think that it's important to have the housing that's right directly across the street to frankly support the business that's right across the street. You know, I'd like the idea, I love the idea potentially of people who might be working at the beam and some of the new offices that will open up would be able to live in a project like this. I also love the fact that you talked about the, with the affordable housing, the scattered site concept, because many times that's something else that people typically do, which is the whole notion of, you know, we're going to have a building of 180 units of market rate housing, and then the 20 affordable units will be clustered together so everybody knows exactly who those people are. And that, and Councilmember QB asked the question about, would the finishes be different? So people know exactly, those are the affordable units, and these are the market rate units. So I love the fact that you're talking about the same finishes throughout and that the units would be scattered throughout the building, and it's not just simply the studio units, but it's going to be a mixture of studios, ones and twos. So I think that really shows a lot of equity across the board, which I think is really important, because to me, it is really critical to break that stigma of people who don't want affordable housing and say, we don't want that kind of thing near us. So I think that's a really positive aspect to the project. And I do like the notion, of course, of the just decreased car trips in general. We had a similar project a few months back where there was a concern where it was a strip center that was being converted into a multifamily complex, I believe the same, roughly the same number of units. It was around 200 or 220 units. And that actually, many of the residents had asked for an office building up at site, but the challenge I said was, if you actually get an office building, first of all, the city doesn't have the ability to control a lot of that when it comes to design and the architecture, but secondly, you're going to get a lot more car trips from people coming in and out during various portions of the day, as opposed to people leaving at 8:00 in the morning or 7:30 to go to work and then coming back at 5:00 or 5:30, and that's pretty much all the traffic you're going to see on what is already a pretty narrow street. Whereas with an office, probably even like the beam across the street, there are going to be people driving back and forth all day, going to meetings, coming in and out of the building for about a 10 to 12-hour period. So I do think that the switching this project over to multifamily was a really smart move, especially given the beam's presence across the street and to reduce the number of car trips. So the only thing I have, what I know I mentioned this to you earlier, was just trying to see what the results of the giblet would be and kind of that analysis from our staff and from Levon about that. But that's my only real question at this point, just trying to ensure that the affordable units actually come as we've discussed and that the numbers work out. But other than that, I do think it's a, it's a beautiful project, and I love the sustainable features, and I just love the way that it actually looks and activates that street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Any other comments from council? All right, with that said, thank you so much, Ms. Sender. Couple of quick things here. I want to read into the record, I've got a letter here from Mr. Yates, which is really from the Riverside Neighborhood Association. Then I have one more speaker card, but let me just go ahead and read this letter. It's from Philip Yates, President, Riverside Neighborhood Association, to the city clerk and council. The Riverside Neighborhood Association has reviewed the draft agreement submitted by the First and Farmer project. We are excited at the prospect of new neighbors and appreciate the offer of $100,000 for improvements and construction mitigation that would certainly maintain our community for current residents and the future residents of the Wexford Companies' development. The association agreed that the proposal could be mutually beneficial to the current and future residents of the Riverside Neighborhood. However, the association also agreed not to sign the current draft with several reservations and proposed changes. A concise list follows. One, the association is concerned with the legally binding nature of the contract and would like the City of Tempe involved in the agreement. Number two, the association would like the agreement to specify that $100,000 will go to the City of Tempe for improvements to the Riverside Neighborhood, such as traffic-calming projects and other safety-related projects, as agreed upon by the City of Tempe and the Riverside Neighborhood Association. These projects will benefit not only the current residents, but also the future residents of the First and Farmer project. Number three, the agreement suggests that parking violations and increased traffic due to construction is not anticipated to be a problem. The association requests that the developer change the wording to recognize that there will be, in fact, daily problems, demonstrate that there will be a plan to mitigate the problems, accept responsibility for violations by subcontractors, and provide a pathway to report violations in agreements with the city. The city has already suggested that the parking plan did not align with code. And number four, the vast majority of the Riverside Neighborhood Association opposes the proposition of upzoning the current zoning at First and Farmer to MU4. Upzoning at this location will not benefit the Riverside Neighborhood in the future. It will increase local property taxes, likely increase rent, and provide an avenue to change the property at a future time to something other than originally intended. The Riverside Neighborhood Association looks forward to supporting an agreement that will be mutually beneficial to the interests of the City of Tempe, the Riverside Neighborhood Association, and the Wexford Companies, Sam Gordon, project at First and Farmer. Respectfully, Philip E. Yates, President, Riverside Neighborhood Association, representing the Riverside Neighborhood in Tempe, Arizona. And next up here, I've got a card from Todd Green to speak. Mr. Green, please come forward and state your name, place of residence, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name's Todd Green, Riverside Neighborhood. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. My name's Todd Green, Riverside Neighborhood, and, you know, every citizen input is really valuable. It's what makes Tempe so great and really so neat. But as we head towards 9 billion people on the planet, let's go up, you know, and not out. You know, let's save the desert for the jeeps and let's live, you know, here in the city. And speaking of numbers, let's talk numbers in the Riverside Neighborhood. You know, we're talking about maybe 40 single-family homes in a core of three streets. That's in a Riverside boundary with over 4,200 residents, from what I just looked on Google, so that's quite a few people. I went to both the developer meeting and also, you know, we were able to get a meeting for kind of discussing this, the interaction that here tonight over the speed bumps, and it's the same five to six households at both meetings. And, you know, on the rare occasion that we have a meeting in Riverside, it's the same five or six households. There's nothing wrong with that. That's great. I mean, that's what makes Tempe really neat, and oftentimes, they are talking to other neighbors and everything, but, you know, we have, just in the last two years, and even building before COVID, we have 432 new members on the Nextdoor app. And I assume, and it looks like from following Nextdoor, these are neighbors that are coming out of the 4,200 residents. And so, you know, you compare that to five or six households, and that silences overwhelming support for a project like this. And what's interesting to me is, in the 30 years that I've lived here, you know, I've never seen a single person in those core three streets complain about tearing down a dilapidated house. You know, now, there's always discussion about the condos and some of those things, but if you drive through our three core streets in Riverside, they're pretty high-quality projects of pretty low density and, you know, compromise, you know, it doesn't always go perfect, but, you know, I just think understanding that kind of input and that kind of numbers that, you know, Riverside Neighborhood is different than some of the other locations in Tempe. And in my personal opinion, I feel like we could build high-density as far west as we'd like to go and never really affect or hurt the special and unique position that these three streets have by the lake. It's wonderful. And I want to thank you all very much for listening and appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Appreciate your comments. All right, Madam Clerk, any other comments from the public requesting to speak?
Mayor, I have no remaining cards.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any final comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. Once again, just want to reiterate that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for January 13th, 2022. Oh, yes.
I'm so sorry to come late with my comment. I just wanted to ensure that the neighborhood stipulations, though the neighborhood doesn't agree with approving the project, that we'd find a way to incorporate those into the project.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just, the lady in the back, she looked like she was raising her hand, so I just wanted to make sure that you were getting acknowledged.
Is it possible to email the comments? Is it an email afterward?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And they're untimely. That was one of my...
She can email them, right? Because she had her hand raised, so, or you're welcome to come down.
I thought about writing, but I just, it's just a question.
Sure, I would say, no, I appreciate that. You can definitely email your comments either to the city clerk's office and reference item 7B2 and just say, here are the comments I'd like for the council to receive, or you can use the council communicator, and then all seven members of the council will receive it, along with the city manager and all relevant staff. So either one of those methods would work to get us your comments, so, perfect. Thank you. All right, sounds good. And to that point, Councilmember QB, I'm sure I answered your question. You're just looking to have the, say it one more time, just make sure I got it totally correct.
The stipulations that you had agreed to, that Wexford had agreed to before, and the neighborhood isn't necessarily supporting the project, but I would assume that the stipulations would move forward?
So it seems to be, I mean, what makes the most, I mean, obviously, Mr. City Manager, Madam City Attorney, let me know if I'm wrong on this, that the, for the second public hearing on January 13th, that, you know, Ms. Sender, who's the applicant for the project, could read the stipulations into the record during the second public hearing. Obviously, we could present, you know, written ones, so the council has it in writing, but she could also speak to them at the second public hearing to ensure they're enshrined in two different ways, so residents could hear each and everything that's being agreed to. It's my, it's sort of my preference, but just want to make sure that's okay.
Sounds good.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council, and it should be included in your request for council action as well, which is published to the public.
Okay. Okay, sounds good, all right. Move on here. Next item on the agenda, these are second public hearing and final adoption. These items were read and introduced on November 9th, 2021, and votes on these items will be taken tonight. First item under the section is 7C1, which is to hold the second and final hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the Tempe City Code, Chapter 13, regarding elections. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Madam Clerk, any comments or requests to speak?
Nothing for this item, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion on item 7C1. Moved by Councilmember Garland, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
All right, I'll take a voice vote here. Councilmember Garland? Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
You might just need to refresh your screens.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams? And Vice Mayor Keating? Vice Mayor Keating, you there? Okay, that item passes 5 to 0 with Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Navarro absent. This next item under the section is 7C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from CSS to MU3, a planned area development overlay, and development plan review consisting of a new three-story mixed-use development consisting of 75 dwelling units and commercial uses for Apache Rock Apartments located at 1935 East Apache Boulevard. The applicant is Huma and One Affiliates. Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Proper. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Lauren Proper Potter, PO Box 1833, Tempe, Arizona, 85280. Do I have a presentation on the way? Excellent news.
You're doing great already.
Thank you. I worked so hard on it, so I want to make sure you guys see it. So while we're waiting, I'll just give a little bit of the background of the project. I know this is our second time together this evening. Thank you very much. So excited to control my own PowerPoint tonight, not that you didn't do a great job. That's okay. You did a great job, so we'll do it again. So I'm here this evening on behalf of Apache Rock. And our request this evening really focuses on our request to add twenty-three additional units to a previously approved project. That previously approved project was approved in 2019. It was partially constructed, and then ultimately, that project failed. It never ceased to complete. So we're here this evening asking for those twenty-three additional units, which we believe will allow the project to come to fruition and ultimately be constructed. Would you go to the next slide for me, please? Thank you. So as you know, the project is located along Apache Boulevard. It's east of McClintock. Would you go to the next slide for me, please? Great. We'll go quickly here. I know it's been kind of a long night. So we're located just under 200 feet from the Smith-Martin Apache Boulevard Light Rail Station. So we're located within a station area of the Transportation Overlay District. You go to the next slide for me. Thank you. The site is currently zoned CSS, and it has an approved use permit that allows residential in the zoning district. So to accommodate our request, would you go to the next slide? Thank you. We're requesting to rezone to MU3, and that will accommodate those twenty-three additional units. Our request to rezone is consistent with the general plan designations. Would you go to the next slide for me, please? Thank you. The projected land use for the site is mixed use. Again, our MU3 request is consistent with the city's long-term planning goals for this area. And one more thing. And the density is high, so up to sixty-five dwelling units per acre. With the additional twenty-three units that we're requesting, our proposed density is just over thirty-three dwelling units per acre, so it's well within the allowance. Thank you. We're also located within the Apache Character area. And so we've incorporated some of the components of the Apache Character Area Plan, just a couple of those things. We have drawn inspiration from the historic plant palette that's included. We have also designed the site to be consistent with the city's twenty-minute city goal. And so that's including the addition of dwelling units along the light rail corridor and specifically within proximity, less than 200 feet, to the Smith-Martin Apache Light Rail Station. And then we're also including 2,300 square feet of retail at the ground floor. It's Apache-facing, and so that will contribute to the pedestrian scale of the site as well. And just briefly, because we're talking about Apache, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Mr. Amorosi. I know everybody up here is familiar with him. He's a huge advocate for the area. He lives nearby. We had an opportunity to have a conversation about the project. He does support the project, so I'm happy to be here tonight with his full support. And thank you for putting up these photographs. These are of the project as it looks today. So you can see Bob's Tire Corral. We're just west of Bob's Tire Corral along Apache. And as you can see, the project is partially constructed. So the approved DPR from 2019, it called for fifty-two dwelling units. You can see the building footprint here. The proposed addition of twenty-three units today, those fall within the same building footprint as it's already been constructed. So how we're accommodating those additional units is we're adding them into the second building. So there's a, Building A is an Apache-facing building, and that's the only building that's going to be directly visible from the street frontage. Behind that building, so because it's kind of a narrow infill site, that is the building that we're adding one additional story to, to accommodate those twenty-three units. Thank you. And so this just shows that the footprint remains the same. We're requesting twenty-five dwelling units. It's mainly to accommodate the addition of one-bedroom units. So these are the elevations from the approved DPR. You can see Building A is, again, that Apache-facing building. And these are the proposed modifications. So Building A has no change. Building B is where you see the increase in height. And so this slide just kind of outlines that hopefully clearly for you guys. You can see I've kind of tried to draw a box around that third story. That's the addition that accommodates these twenty-three new units. And so, again, the next couple of slides, I believe, are going to be a couple of renderings. They're going to show you the project from Apache. And so you'll see that this doesn't change based on the inclusion of twenty-three additional units. And so we've had one hearing before the Development Review Commission on October 26. We're glad to be here tonight, letting you know that that was, we were recommended unanimously for approval at that meeting. And I did want to take this opportunity to thank the mayor for his time and involvement in the Hometown for All Initiative. Mayor Woods, you so graciously took the time to explain the importance of the Hometown for All Initiative to my client. And I'm proud to be here tonight, letting you know that he will be participating in the Hometown for All Initiative as a result of that conversation. So thank you very much for that. And so ultimately, the request this evening before you is the addition of those twenty-three units to the previously approved project. Unfortunately, that project was not built as proposed. And so we're here this evening with a proposal that we're confident can get constructed. So we respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, let me look here. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, were there any comments or requests to speak received electronically from the public regarding this item?
Nothing other than was read at the beginning of the meeting, Mayor.
Okay. I will close the public hearing. I'm going to look to the council to see if there's any comments or discussion. Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
No comments, Lauren. Thank you so much for coming. I know this is like your second presentation. Yes, you did a really fine job, so thank you for that. You know, and I'm confident, too, I do think this project is one that's going to get done and be developed, and it'll be a really good amenity and a good addition to that area. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to move approval.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Arredondo Savage, seconded by Councilmember Garland. Any further comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember QB.
Maybe it's just because we had a presentation of an apartment complex that was so beautiful. And I just find it just, it's rare that I also look at development and say, "That is ugly." I really feel like it's really ugly and eyesore. Typically, I wouldn't notice, but in this case, just the beige and the blue, it just doesn't impress me. I also feel, you know, it's transit-oriented development. What an ideal place for actual transit-oriented development principles and practices. And we see none of that. We see none of the context of that neighborhood. So I won't be supporting the project tonight. And also, what is the contribution to Hometown for All? What does that amount to in terms of dollars?
So we're still working with staff, Councilmember QB, to determine the exact amount. It will be as requested, the 20% voluntary contribution.
And how much is that?
We think it's approximately $13,000.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Good job. And I just, you know, if Phil Amorosi is good with this, it's right in his backyard, I'm good with it. And I really appreciate that you're working with Phil. He's the neighborhood leader in that area. And I'm a huge believer in empowering the neighborhoods in decision-making processes. So, very good. Thank you. I will be supporting this project this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Just really quickly to, you know, thank you, Lauren, for taking a great job on the presentation. I really appreciate you working with Mr. Amorosi. I think he's been chair of that Neighborhood Association for twenty years, if not more, quite honestly. So I know that, you know, he has a very good handle on the people in his neighborhood, as well as the folks with Citizens for a Vibrant Apache Corridor as well. So I really appreciate that, you working with him. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, I know that originally, this project was sort of approved at fifty-two units, but then there were some challenges. And so there were additional units added to make the project financially viable, so you could actually fix it. And one of the things that I heard from a couple of residents I talked to in that area was, you know, now that the project is definitely being, already under construction, we need this project actually completed. Because we want to make sure that we don't have a half-completed project on Apache Boulevard as the neighborhood and the entire corridor continues to make such incredible strides. So I really appreciate the fact that, you know, you've come up with a creative solution to get this done. I'd also say, you know, I think just, you know, once again, conversations, you know, about housing affordability. You know, I'm obviously a huge, you know, champion for workforce housing and affordable housing. But my big thing, too, is also trying to make sure that for all of our communities, and I've had conversations in the past with Mr. Amorosi and other people along the Apache Boulevard corridor, and frankly, in other neighborhoods throughout the city of Tempe, that they've talked about really wanting a mix of housing. They've wanted elements of affordable housing, workforce housing, but also market-rate housing in everybody's neighborhoods. No neighborhood says, "I want all market rate and all luxury," and no neighborhood says, "I want nothing but affordable." And so I think that the sort of mix of housing that would be provided by this and other developments that are coming along in the Apache Boulevard corridor will only continue to help that neighborhood thrive and evolve as we move forward. So that's my, those are my comments, but I appreciate that. Any further comments from counsel? All right, hearing none. Go here. Back here, Peter. Go ahead and call the question here. Please vote.
Yes.
No.
Okay. You can give me a voice vote, Counsel.
Yes.
Okay. So that vote passes five to one with Councilmember QB voting no and Councilmember Navarro absent.
Thank you.
The next item under the section is 7C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a planned area development and a development plan review for Generations Medical Center to increase landscaping and reduce the required parking for an existing 29,675-square-foot medical office located at 6301 South McClintock Drive. The applicant is Gamage &amp; Burnham, PLC.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Sorry. My name is Manjula Vaz, Law Firm of Gamage &amp; Burnham. I am here on behalf of Generations Medical Center and Moonshadow Properties. This is a... Jason, are you moving?
Can I make one quick comment to Ms. Vaz, too, as well? Just wanted to note, too, just in the documents here, the total area here is 2.796 acres, which has been corrected in the ordinance. And so the legal attachment for the ordinance and the report information all have the correct number of 2.796 acres. So just wanted to make sure everybody knows that that's been corrected to be 100% accurate. So, with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that. This is a fairly... Oh, that's, sorry, Jason. That's okay. That's fine. Thank you, Jason. This is a fairly simple request. Our request today is to do a PAD overlay to permit lower parking ratio than required by code. And as you said, do a minor development plan review for landscape improvements. Next slide, Jason. I think two more. If not, I can just go for... Anyway, I'll just talk about it. Okay. Well, I think I could just explain the project. We made a full presentation last month. And as I think all of us know, the zoning code requires that the site would have 198 spaces for a medical center. However, the site has 158 spaces and has had 158 spaces for over fifteen years. So we are doing a planned area development to decrease the parking, to bring it in conformance to what is actually on site. So there are no changes to the operationally what's going on site. In exchange for the PAD and the lower parking requirement, we will be adding, here you go, more landscaping and some parking lot improvements. And I think some of you all know, from a PAD perspective, this will allow the site to be, thanks, Jason, to be more flexible. And that, as we move forward, if there are further issues related to court decisions or other decisions, working with the other property owners, we'll be able to change the PAD boundaries. You know, we've done that through the conditions of approval. And the PAD will allow the site to be more flexible within its development standards. And we see this, hopefully, this will allow the Generation site right now to be conformed with its parking. As it moves forward, if the park needs to move, if parking lines need to move, we can use the PAD to change that and hopefully allow this property and the other properties to kind of move forward and hopefully resolve some of these issues. So I won't go into the whole situation, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Vaz. Let me next go to see if there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council? Mrs. Zubair? If you're going to come on down, state your name and place of residence, and you have three minutes.
I have comments, public comments, submitted to the website. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, respect to members of council, ladies and gentlemen. I represent a community of 400 families and roughly 1,000-plus boarders in Tempe. And I'm very thrilled that after six years, I have opportunity to talk to council. We have an issue going on in our community. We feel like we're not treating fairly. And I'd like to bring to your attention as why in these three minutes. So it's a challenge for me. And I brought another additional person. He's not going to talk, but if needed, please give me a few more minutes. So I'll just make one point. It's a long history. It's a very complicated history of this development. And just let me state this thing, that as of yesterday, it was not clear to us the legal description of this property. Ryan has been very helpful in answering my questions. On 29th of November, this 2.79 acre came in before it was 2.4 acre. Okay, so 2.4 acre community may not have any opposition, but a 2.79 over community has a position to it. And I will tell you why. But we just got information yesterday. Still, I want to know from here, from the council, that there's a diagram there. It says Lot 1. We want to know which plot is Lot 1. Can somebody please tell me which plat so I can make a comment? I do not know which plat it is. But the description there, I need to know the plat so I can make my comment here, the reason I came. Is this a plat 76438 in accessory office that's recorded? Or is this another plat? Because my comment depend on which plat it is. Lot 1 can be any place, but it needs to have a plat in it.
Quick question, Mrs. Zubair. Madam City Attorney, am I allowed to call Ryan up to specify which plat it is?
Certainly.
That would be excellent.
Okay, sounds good. Ryan, you would mind coming up and helping out with this?
And Mayor, just to make a note, I didn't receive an electronic speaker card from Mr. Zubair, but it looks like he did write to council communicator, so you'll have that information there.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Which plat it is, what's the plat number on it?
This is in reference to Exhibit Book 764 of...
38, okay, good. So thank you very much, Ryan. I really appreciate it. Ryan and I had discussion on this plat. This plat was approved by council in August 2003. But as approved by council, plat was not recorded, same plat. Different plat was recorded as a survey, okay? According to ARS, there's only one body in Tempe exists that can change the lot boundaries. And there are penalties about it. So Ryan told me that this property is not split. The back lot is not split. So the back lot is a separate lot. So here, I will use this, with the mayor's permission, I will use this as a lot. This is a bigger lot, Lot 1, Generation Medical Center. And this is a smaller lot, Lot 2, in the back. So what Ryan told me, that this lot is not split. Panhandle area of this portion of this lot is not included in this one. This is a separate lot. So I said, "Fine." I said, "Then how come it includes in this request for a pad? How come this portion of the property is added here?" Ryan told me that owner thinks that he owns this part of the lot. And I said, "Fine." So that means it's a simple case that we are co-owners of this lot, this lot here. He said, "Fine, we'll go to court. We'll ask court, who's this, you know, whether they are owner or not." But question for the council, the reason I came here today is that you are considering this as a portion of this lot with this lot? That means you're considering, you're splitting this lot from here and adding here. You're doing lot line adjustment on my lot here. But I did not apply for it. I'm not applicant on this pad. With that, if you have any question?
Counsel, any comments or questions for Mrs. Zubair?
Could we have Manjula Vaz respond?
Please. I'll wait and then...
Sounds good.
Thank you, Manjula.
You're welcome.
Oh, Mayor, members of the council. I, Mr. Zubair and I had a nice chat the other day. I think what I was... I'm not... The plat that's required is 76438, which is what Ryan had said. All I did was put the PAD on top of the plat. I'm not changing the plat lines. So the PAD is following the recorded plat in the, on the recorder's office. If, as Mr. Zubair said, the plat lines change, the PAD can easily change to match the plat lines. But I think some of this relates to, you know, legal issues that are going through the courts right now. But the PAD can be moved to match the plat lines. Right now, it's matching the current plat lines in 76438.
Quick question. So, Mr. Zubair, yes?
Will I have an opportunity to...
Yes, absolutely. And I want to also, you know, give, you can come back up. I wanted to also give Ryan an opportunity, after you speak, to just provide some context. Does Dr. Minhust, do you want to speak as well, or?
I'll keep my time to...
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
I think I'll give Ryan...
Okay. Ryan, can you come up and kind of give a little bit of an overview about the project and kind of explain, you know, some of the questions? Because there's definitely a lot of, kind of a very big technical nature to this, which I think would be not just helpful to the council, but obviously to anyone here and anyone watching at home.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Ryan LeVague, Deputy Director, Community Development Planning Division. So there's a reference to a couple of recorded plats. There was approval of a plat that occurred in 2003, which basically split a larger lot of Generations Medical Center into a horizontal split without what is described as this little dogleg portion of the lot. dogleg portion of the lot. There was a second plat that came two years later in 2005 that introduced the formation of what exists today for the Maricopa County Recorder's Office. And this is the site and area in question that is identified as ownership of Moonshadow Properties LLC. And the applicant is requesting to put the PAD overlay on this current 2005 subdivision I believe the opposing parties have some concerns or questions regarding the validity of some title agreements, some REOs, covenants and restrictions pertaining to private legal matters related to the property. But all we have on record right now today in its current condition is the 2005 plat that exists since that time.
Thank you, Ryan.
And that's the plat subdivision area that we use to define the legal boundary of this proposed PAD to reduce those parking standards.
Thank you, Ryan. Councilmember QB.
I have a question, but it's for Judy, our attorney, our city attorney. So would a decision tonight strengthen the legal case of one of the other parties because, or are they completely separate? By making a decision about the parking, is that acknowledging that, or stating that that plat is as filed, if there is a concern about it being improperly filed?
Thank you, council member. If the council wishes to vote to adjourn, or I'm sorry, to recess briefly to go into executive session, I can talk a little bit about some legal analysis that may have bearing on the litigation. But the application that is before you tonight is separate from the litigation.
I'll go for E session. Okay. Counsel, anything else in your mind, or?
Well, in a way, it's my question.
Sorry, I just heard. You're a spy question away. I wouldn't want a decision made about parking to reinforce another illegal position. You said there's something totally separate, and that's what Manjula Vaz had said as well.
I'd be happy to provide a legal analysis, but I believe it should be in a confidential setting. So if the council wishes to vote to recess briefly for executive session, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else from council, any comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Redondo Savage.
Thank you very much. And I just want to say thank you to all the parties for being here. I know Mr. Zubair, this is something that we've been talking about for a really long time, trying to reach some resolution. I just want to make sure I'm really kind of understanding where we're going and where we want to be in the long term, because it's my understanding that this, we're not changing the plat lines. We're not changing the parties' responsibilities to each other. This doesn't have any impact on any of the legalities that are currently happening. And it's my understanding that this is part of a longer process. This may be just the first step into what we're trying to accomplish, and it's maybe where that gets a little gray, in the sense of what is it we are trying to accomplish in the sense of what is this long game and what is the goal we are trying to achieve? So if there's maybe a way that we could possibly ask the parties to address that for us, I think that might be a little helpful. Is that okay, Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely.
No exception.
So let me, so actually, let me bring Ms. Vaz up and Mr. Zubair. So Ms. Vaz, I'm going to bring you up, and then Mr. Zubair, I know you'd like to offer a follow-up comment.
Mayor, members of the council, I think, as council member can be said, from the immediate plan right now is to try to use the PAD to get a variance to resolve the parking, just from the zoning code standpoint. Nothing is changing on the ground. There's 158 spaces on the ground. We need some sort of zoning document that documents the number of parking. That allows us to move forward in, forward as in, we can then transact on the property, we can then move forward with the courts. This property becomes conforming from a legal standpoint, from a zoning standpoint, then we can then move forward with the other issues related on a kind of larger litigation site. It doesn't necessarily form to the plat. We use the plat as a basis because that's entitled what the current recorder has as the basis of the boundaries. If the court decides the boundaries are different, they need to go either move west or east or change boundaries, the plat, the PAD could change strictly as zoning mechanism to fix the parking.
Thank you, Ms. Vaz, appreciate it. Mr. Zubair?
Mayor, I really appreciate you asking this question. And as a non-speaker of English and our entire community, we are not real estate experts, so I really appreciate what you're doing here. I refer to, first of all, let me thank God that we have a city clerk office. We looked into the council proceedings of August 2003, and we provided a copy of the proceedings, what council approved, okay? That is here on the staff report, page 74 and page 75 of the staff report, we provided the copy of the council proceedings, what City Tempe Council approved the plat. That plat is not same as accessory plat, you know, the plat that Manjula is using, okay? But we purchase the properties from the accessory, you know, from the plat. Now, the accessory plat, when government in 2006 purchased the property, Lot 1, this big lot, it was considered for this plat as an illegal plat. It is entirely committed written, we provided a copy to the staff, it's a part of the Tempe records. So the difference today is that what they are asking here is not the pad. They are asking you to do three things, actually that's what they're accomplishing it. One, they are doing lot line adjustment. The request is not made. You approve this pad, you approve this plat, it is, Tempe City Council is approving a new lot line adjustment on the lot that we share here. Just worst case, we share. We think we own it, but we told the guy, says, share it. If we share it, we still need to make a co-application for lot line adjustment. Second thing is they are using your authority under the pad guys that they are annexing this portion of property and attaching here. So this is why we are here to warn, and we are here to, you know, articulate to you that there is a property dispute is here for last six year, that our opponent is trying to define new lot lines and through different courts, et cetera, et cetera. And it's only one simple question, where is the lot line? And they think the panhandle area belongs to them. Sometimes they think panhandle area, they just own it, but it's not the part of the lot. So we are asking them, please, take one position. They're not taking one position. Actually, they came back and they're asking council, because council is only authorized to change the lot lines. So two different systems, there's only one objective, there's no other dispute. It's only one objective is to redefine the lot line. We are very happy, and we have, there's a record here. Mosque has provided all the parking to the medical center from day one for free. We have not registered a single complaint against medical center or neighbors. We own a lot of properties there, but we never registered a complaint that this property doesn't have enough parking. By the way, we were forced to purchase the property, that they'll put a fence around our mosque if we don't buy the property. And during the process, before the mosque owned the property, it was owned by another entity. That entity submitted two development plan to City of Tempe on entire this lot. There was not a single comment about title. It was just fine. There's only when mosque purchased the property, the title comment came in. And we are still very happy, I'm not contesting here, that if this guy says, I own this one, perfectly fine, you know, there's a law there, the courts there. But then we are two, we are two co-owners of this lot, and we should both make an application to you for lot line adjustment. None of us has authority alone to make that request for lot line adjustment. So that is what we're trying to bring to your attention.
Oh, thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
So I asked you, we have offered a delay that, you know, let's delay it, another council meeting, and then have everybody educated. It's a very, very complicated, long history of this development. And it has moved from the, first, the opponent claimed entire lot has implied easement. So first, it went to implied easement, then it went to variance, now it was on the pad. And this only one intent is to change the lot line there and annex that small portion of back lot and add to the bigger lot. That's the only purpose of it. Otherwise, we will cooperate. We have offered a settlement, by the way, to the city staff. I don't know whether it got to you. We offered a settlement. We believe there's no need a pad, there's already a solution existing, what the prior owner had in mind. And there's a, there's a, there's a plat 26222 that holds. And then there are the private documents that I don't want to discuss with here, but 26722, general plan of development holds today. And that's why we never complained about the medical center existence or lack of parking. We are here to cooperate. But this is going on, different tactics, different guys, so you are not approving a pad today. We are approving three things. A, you are doing lot line adjustment. B, you are annexing part of this property and adding there. And third is a pad. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I thank you, you asking around, it's a very complicated, complicated, you know, history of it. I represent a community, they all send me message, and then I try to channel that to you. And sometimes it just looks like a mess, somebody's just, you know, making a noise. So I just came here to deliver one message. We are doing three things tonight. Lot line adjustment, annexing the property from here, giving to this through a city ordinance, and the third one is a pad, okay? With that, if there's any question for me?
Let me look too, because I see Councilmember Redondo Savage had her hand up, so we go to her really quickly.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Zubair. I know this is very complicated. I know you and I have had many conversations about this, and we really want to have a really good resolution. The mosque has been fabulous partners, and we are so grateful for your presence in the city of Tempe and everything that you do for this community. I just want to say that first and foremost. And I got to tell you, I'm a little confused in regards to where we are and what we are trying to accomplish in the long term. And I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, going for the same goal, and I'm not really positive that's what I'm hearing here tonight. I am not opposed to postponing this item, just so we can gather some more information just to make sure that we're all on the same page. I'm very happy to do that. And I really want to understand too, and maybe would be good for us to get some legal advice before we come together again, just to really understand what's happening in litigation, how this may impact the litigation or not, or for something that we want to postpone and wait for. But I am very happy to take that recommendation to make a postponement until a future council meeting.
May I add, Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
May I add one comment? Yes, there's a resolution to it. We believe there's a resolution. We believe there's no problem. The problem is there's a third party there that's not on the table. And our community believes that this litigation is being driven by Tempe. That's why third party is not on table. So the third party, these are the two parties fighting, actually, third party is the one that key party. They hold the whole thing. And if you give me a second, and it's very late, and it's Thursday night football also, so it's a third party that's missing. And I think Mosque is open, there already solution is in place. And by the way, I did not mention to you, because I was just told not to talk too much and just deliver one message so council knows about it.
No, no, somebody didn't tell you that.
If you go with the pad to tonight, the site, site that's three people there will lose 26 parking, because those 26 parking will disappear, they are built on accessway, that they and I have a right on that. So actually, this whole thing was done to save those 26 parking. Plus, you will create a 40 redundant parking on this back lot that they hold through a private agreement. So somebody who had already put solution is a nice solution in place. Problem is the solution is not approved by Tempe City Council.
Let me ask you real quick, yours was in the form of, not to interrupt, I just wanted to say, yours was in the form of a motion, Councilmember Redondo Savage?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
And I would second that motion. I, you know, we really appreciate the relationship that we have with the city, with the mosque, and, you know, I just agree with what Robin's saying, that I think, or Councilmember Redondo Savage is saying about, we need more information. I do not feel comfortable taking a vote on this at this point. So I just would rather get legal advice and then come back and miss this.
And Mayor, we cherish the relationship with the city. We have a wonderful person, City Duty Manager, Rosa, and we have wonderful people, city manager. You know, we are a new community here, we are like sort of, in a way, you know, very, very new, first generation American. They have been very helpful to us, and many of you, we know personally, and we respect the, our neighbors, that's a part of our faith. And we accommodate them. And, but what we are asking for is that there's a solution already, and if you go this way, I think it's going to create a lot of more problems. Plus, you're going to create a waste on the site. So let's use, I see nice projects here, you're using a lot of pads, you're managing spaces. But why we are going to waste 26 plus 40 parking on the site by doing this project? So we are open, and we had a very good meeting with Manjula. We really appreciate her openness to, you know, respond to my texts, talk to me, and we'll be very glad to sit and talk with you.
Thank you, Mr. Zubair, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So I've got a motion on the table from Councilmember Redondo Savage to postpone to the next regular council meeting on January 13th, and a second by Councilmember Adams. I'm going to go ahead and look for any further comments or questions on this item. Okay, hearing none of them, go ahead and call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Councilmember, okay. Vice Mayor Keating? All right, and I vote aye as well. That item passes five to zero with Councilmember Navarro and Vice Mayor Keating absent. All right. Next up is item 7C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving the conveyance of certain city-owned improved property at the addresses of 943 East Henry Street and 412 West Pebble Beach, to Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Incorporated, a nonprofit corporation, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to convey property, covenants, deeds, and other related documents necessary to effect such conveyance and related transactions. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Okay, any comments or requests to speak electronically from the public, Madam Clerk?
Nothing for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing.
I motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved to approve by Councilmember Adams. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember QB. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes five to zero with Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Navarro absent. Next item under the section of 7C5, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of the Agave Center Lot Number 2, located at 1791 West Green Tree Drive in Tempe, for city use and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute the related documents. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Madam Clerk, any comments or requests to speak from the public?
Nothing for this item, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
I move to approve.
Been moved by Councilmember Adams, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember QB. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes five to zero with Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Navarro absent. The last item under the section of 7C6, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment and sale of a portion of city right-of-way along South Judd Street. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Madam Clerk, any comments or requests to speak from the public?
Nothing for this item, Mayor.
I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by Councilmember QB. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes five to zero with Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Navarro absent. That brings us to item number eight, current events, council announcements and future agenda items. I'm going to call on the council for their comments. I'm going to first start with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and I want to thank Alex Chin for putting my announcements together tonight. So thank you, Alex, if you're out there. So Tempe Public Library will be hosting their eighth annual Tempe Writing and Cover Design Contest. Submissions of original works of fiction, creative nonfiction, or poetry will be accepted from January 3rd to February 14th. So that's coming up pretty fast. Writers can find full contest details and eligibility at tempepubliclibrary.org/writingcontest. So I really encourage everyone to participate in that. It's a great program, and thanks to Community Services for putting this on. My second announcement is winner registration for classes... My second announcement is winner registration for classes is open. The staff remains dedicated to providing quality classes and programs that will keep you and your family active, engaged, and having fun. Programs will be offered both in person at select city of Tempe facilities and virtually for participation from home, which is nice to have the choice. Some people are comfortable going out, and some people aren't. So I'm really glad that they were offering that choice. The choice is yours, but you must register to participate in these activities. For more information, visit www tempe.gov/play. My third announcement is Diane Reeves will be making her first-ever appearance at Tempe Center for the Arts. And that will be... That will happen on December 11th. This five-time Grammy Award winner will be sharing her timeless voice and proudest in an exceptional holiday program of seasonal sounds from her Christmas Time Is Here album. Tickets are available for purchase at tempecentforthearts.com or TCA box office at 480-350-2822. And I can't imagine how beautiful that will be in our award-winning concert venue over there, so please consider going to the event. My third announcement is I want to tell everybody happy holidays and happy New Year. It's been a tough year, I know, but I'm very optimistic about 2022, and just really want to wish you and your families and your friends and everyone a happy holiday and a happy New Year. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Let me next go to Councilmember Redondo Savage. Thank you. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
I have one thing... I have something better than slides. I have a plaque. So we passed a land acknowledgement resolution in January of this year, and one of the things we did is acknowledge the lands that we are on belonging to the Otham and the Peepash people. And I don't know if you noticed on your way in on that really beautiful orange wall, there's a plaque that we installed today that reads, "Welcome to the Tempe City Council Chambers. This building rests upon the homelands of the Otham and the Peepash people." So I just want to make sure that when you guys come in next time, that you recognize and see that, because it's really incredible. So just want to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Let's see. Next up, I'm going to go to Councilmember QB.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Welcome to America Project, it's part of the slide. It's not all showing up. In any case, they welcome resettled refugees and connect them to vital resources and help create community and integrate them into the community, and we are a most welcoming and inclusive community. So I would encourage you to go to wtap.org. They're taking donations, I believe, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. They're in need of... They have a whole wish list, if you go to the website, but they're very much in need of lots of household equipment, not stoves or refrigerators. They can't fit them in their huge warehouse, but please consider a donation. Thank you. And the next one? So the 11th Annual A-Mountain Restoration Project. We are combining forces with Keep Tempe Beautiful... Something went wrong with the slide. Anyway, we're combining resources with Keep Tempe Beautiful. And so the 18th of December, from 8:00 to 11:00, you can sign up for a shift at keptempbebeautiful.org. You know, we use... This is a sacred place to our native and indigenous communities, and we don't treat it so well. So we're going to try and do some cleanup along the trails and be very respectful of that area, and we really would encourage you to come volunteer and sign up. There are three shifts, so we'll keep them short and sweet, but we'll get a lot accomplished in those few hours. And one more, I believe. The Tempe pit count is happening in January, and please contact me, Lauren underscore QB, at tempe.gov to sign up. I know Dorian will be there with me at 6:00 in the morning, and we have the wonderful Mark Vanik dancing chef. Yay!
That's what I was supposed to...
Thank you. Thank you so much. And for the pit count, this is... It happens across the country, and it's a really important time for us to make contact with our houseless neighbors and to query them on a host of issues and even make connections with resources. But what the numbers that we come up with helped determine the kind of resources we get from Maricopa County and from the federal government. And Corey, you've always been there as well, so looking forward to seeing all of council members there that morning to welcome all the volunteers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. And I guess just me, I just wanted to say happy holidays and happy New Year to everyone here in the audience here, and of course, everyone watching at home and all my colleagues. Just really appreciate each and every one of you. I'll go on to item number nine here, public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who would have liked to address the city council? And if so, please come forward, state your name and city of residence for the record. Seeing none, I'm going to ask if the... Ugh, can't even talk anymore. My goodness.